This is the April seventeenth meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, certainly.
Caught you by surprise, didn't I?
Uh, Champlin, no. Condo Dimitraki. Ochs.
Here.
Hicks.
Uh, hi, I'm here.
Pierce.
Here.
Rosenberger.
Here.
Santa Cruz.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Todd.
Here.
Woodfin.
Here.
Right, I have a quorum. We'll open the public here. It will open the meeting. First item on the agenda tonight is approval of the March twentieth minute, meeting minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. For the record, we'll recognize and welcome Deena Dimitraki to the, to the table as a brand-new member of the planning board. You hit us with a bad night tonight. You know, it's a real slow night. Usually, there's a lot more people here, so let that worry you, but we will, we'll get you through it and, and move forward. So, welcome, welcome to the table.
Thank you.
So, a quick agenda overview for anybody that's here regarding item four A, four B, nine B, or ten C. That was a condo development at one sixty-nine Fisherville Road, a major site plan at one twenty-five North State Street, an amendment for five to thirteen Stickney Avenue, and a major site plan for three eighty-eight Loudoun Road. Those items have all been postponed to the May fifteenth meeting, so we can take a motion in totality if someone like to make a motion to postpone those items to the May fifteenth planning board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. We've got design review applications by consent. So, on your agenda, item four, design review applications by consent, there's two items, item four A and item four B, correct?
Five.
We just pulled four A and four B.
It's five B and five C.
Sorry, well, the wrong line.
That's okay.
So, design review applications by consent, we have items five A through five K. For those in the audience, anyone that has any questions or concerns about any of those applications, if you could make yourself known, and we'll pull those from the consent agenda. We review architectural design review comments and questions and vote on those in totality. I know we've got a couple that we want to pull off. If you could tell me which ones we're going to pull?
Four B and four C. Uh, five, now he's got me doing it. Five B and five C.
Five B and five C have been pulled from consent. Five A, sorry, five B and five C, you said, right?
Yes.
Pulled. So, five A, five D, five E, five F, five G, five H, five I, five J, and five K. Any others want to pull from consent? No? Any members of the audience have any questions or concerns about any of those applications? If not, we'll take them in totality. So, would someone like to make a motion to approve those items as submitted with architectural design review recommendations?
So moved.
Motion has been made. We have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Let's read item five A.
B.
B into the record if we could.
Jeff Burnham, on behalf of Capital City Billiards, requests architectural design review approval for existing sixty-square-foot internally illuminated wall sign at two nineteen Fisherville Road located in the general commercial district.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I noticed that ADR had some comments regarding the sign, didn't have a permit, it was put up, and now the sign doesn't meet current standards. The illumination is broken, one thing, and then it doesn't have the OPEC back panel.
Yep.
Instead of the white that shows the light through like we require. And I'm just wondering, you know, over the last few months, we've really been tracking a lot of these older signs that are non-conforming, and I think that rather than set a precedent that these signs can continue to stay up until the next time the business change, we need to start making it known that if you put up signs and they weren't permitted, you will be required to bring them into compliance.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay, recommendation? Recommend denial?
Pretty much. I mean, you can probably help me out about what ADR felt was out of compliance that needed to be addressed. I think it was the OPEC and the lighting system internally.
Yeah, so, I, for clarification, it's within compliance for zoning. It's within the design review guidelines. Typically, the opaque background is put behind white to prevent that barge illumination. This particular display has an older style of lighting behind it, and half of it doesn't work. So, there was an ADR member who had commented that they went through and there was a lot of canopy lighting that almost drowned out what internal illumination was occurring, and which is why they concluded their motion that if that lighting ever changes, that it come back. And it's similar with the five C as well, where those signs, especially five C, the lighting behind it is so old, it, it, it doesn't have the same intensity that newer LED illumination backlit have. That was their rationale for these two unique cases, but they were concerned with exactly what you are about, these precedences, and they, they take it into consideration that had these signs gone before them, these would be conditions. So, they're, they're aware, and they don't necessarily just treat them because they're existing non-permitted, that they should just be approved in any manner.
So, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess my question would be, if the sign lighting breaks, and they just have someone to come in and repair it, and we don't know, we're going to continue to have this non-standard, whatever you want to call it, issue until we send code enforcement out, or they happen to notice it, or somebody brings it to our attention. So, where do we kind of stop this potential domino effect from happening? Any thoughts?
I, I mean, you're not wrong. That hypothetical could apply anytime, anywhere.
True.
I think the big thing is if it got upgraded, it would mostly be upgraded to an LED internal illumination, which would be very noticeable.
Just.
Yep.
Point of clarification. So, these two signs were originally installed with no approval from ADR or the board?
They were, our code department has been going through and doing a lot of enforcing, and they're finding existing signs that are out of compliance and/or existing and non-permitted, and so you've seen a lot of them come before us, actually. So, this, in the case of one oh eight Fisherville, those signs have been there a long time. The two nineteen is newer, but still, essentially, it's the same thing. ADR just looked at it, didn't matter if it'd been there two days or two, twenty years, it's.
So, the recommendation is to go back and start the process and do it the right way?
That's what I'm thinking, is we need to.
Yep, no, I'm with you. I'm with you. You got a motion?
I guess I'd.
Again, I, I think it's the motion to deny the application.
Deny the application and make them.
Refer them back to code for.
Bring it back into ADR standard, right. And I, I think.
And to be compliant with the regulations.
Design guidelines.
Design guidelines. I was thinking of wording. I was going to say the ADR guidelines.
That sounded like a valid motion.
And, and I'll second, but I just wonder, is it appropriate for us to put a date on this, to be completed by? Is that something that we typically do?
No, not usually.
Okay.
Not if you're denying the application. If you're denying the application, I think.
The process will still road through with code, right?
The sign would have to come down, and code would, falls into code's hands.
Yep. Your second still valid? Without a, without a deadlines of time?
Yes.
Again, knowing that code will follow up.
Yes. Yep, I'm fine. Second.
If I could ask this question. If they're a non-conforming sign, does that put them into that penalty that we assess per day?
If they stay out, yeah, after code.
So, behoove them to.
Yep.
Work out some sort of arrangement with code enforcement.
Get the process.
And get that, and if they, you know, move that through, then I, I would think we would take that into consideration.
So, can we do this for both signs?
I would say it's for both unless Ann Marie wants to do them separately.
Do you want to do them separately?
Only because I've just read one, so let's do the one and then.
We can do the one, and then we can do the second one.
For five B.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. We'll read item five C into the record.
Andrew.
Mayo.
Mayo?
Mayo.
Mayo. On behalf of Shijuan Gardens, requests architectural design review approval for existing eighteen-square-foot and twenty-four-square-foot internally illuminated building signs at one oh eight Fisherville Road in the general commercial district.
So, same issues with those, and we don't need to redo them if we'd like to make a motion. Earl, would you like the second?
Yes.
Okay, motions are made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. That brings us on to the next section in our agenda, which is Section C, determination of completeness, items by consent. Do we want to take anything out of the consent agenda for determination of completeness, six A, six B, or six C?
So, Chairman?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself from item six B.
Okay, we'll recognize that Amanda Savage is recusing from six B. Should we take them all in totality? Her vote will count for only six A and six C. Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns regarding item six A, six B, or six C? Nope. So, determination of completeness by consent. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those applications as complete and move them into the public hearings, public hearing section for next month?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. That brings us to the end of our consent agenda items. Let's move on to item eight A. If we could read item eight A into the record.
Jeremy Nadal, on behalf of Nadal Subs, requests architectural design review approval for an existing nine-point-two-square-foot internally illuminated pylon panel sign, an existing ten-square-foot internally illuminated window sign, and a new thirty-point-zero-six-square-foot internally illuminated building sign at eighty-nine Fort Eddie Road in the Gateway Performance District.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, come on up.
Hello.
How are you? If you could just sign in there, that would be great. We may have a couple of questions for you, we may not. Could we get a quick staff update on this?
Uh, sure. This is a, the, some signs here are, were found to be existing non-remitting. My understanding is the building sign was, is currently installed, and the applicant had requested to be moved to a public hearing to appeal directly to you about their sign.
Okay, well, tell us a little bit about the issue, and, and if you could just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Jeremy Nado. I'm the owner of Nadal Subs traps. What I am requesting is, upon the design review, I put, I'm being honest to me, I didn't realize that Pepsi logos or drink logos weren't allowed on the sign. So, we got, when I went through planning, it, it got kicked back and said, would be approved with an interior sign and just my logo on the outside of the exterior building. So, I'm more than willing to just remove the logos and just have my logo on the outside existing sign.
So, I just want to stop you. I apologize, but I, I want to, just point of clarification is, it's, it's not that it's not allowed. The, the sign itself, for, from a logoing perspective, and feel free to chime in on, and keep me honest here, but architectural design review has, has the ability to, to express to you that you can't do this and you can't do that.
Yes, sir.
And in some cases, they're very, very, very much in their, in their purview. In this case, we're, we're stretching the line of free speech, and we're getting a little bit tight on exactly what we can put on a sign, what we can dictate that can be put on a sign, and what can't, more importantly, what can't be put on a sign.
Yes, sir.
So, if you would like those Pepsi logos to remain on the sign for co-op dollars, or whatever the, whatever the reason is that you'd like them on the sign, we'd like to know that. And if you don't want them on the sign, and you don't have any problem taking them off, that's fine as well. But don't feel that, that you're here at a disadvantage by putting them there.
Yes, sir.
If you could justify the fact that they should be there, or you want them there, please tell us why.
Yes, the reason why I did put the Pepsi logos on the sign is they did, you know, give me money for the signage, so they get the advertising from the sign.
Absolutely.
Did not put Pepsi logos on the pole signs, which were approved. It was just the initial, the box sign on front of my establishment.
Okay.
But if it's a, if it's a, you know, game breaker, I'll take the Pepsi logos on the sign.
So, either way, one, one way or the other.
Yes, sir.
Explain that appropriately?
Perfect.
Yes.
I, Mr. Chair, I just, you know, in speaking with other staff today, we felt that the Pepsi logos actually were probably a problem under ordinance twenty-eight-six-seven M, which talks about billboard signs, or signs unrelated to the principal use. And if this was a Pepsi distributor, you know, or a factory that made Pepsi, that's one thing. Understand the co-op thing, but in this case, we felt that the inclusion of the Pepsi logo was in violation of that particular ordinance.
So, twenty-six-six-seven?
Twenty-eight dash six dash seven signs prohibited under this ordinance. It's, it's letter M.
Okay.
I know.
So, that's a different story. So, then, you're, you're okay with approving the sign, so either spreading out the Nados or leaving the space opaque without the Pepsi logos?
That's correct. Absolutely.
Any other questions from this applicant? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted without the, I'll make the motion, to approve this, the package, as we've got it in our, in our, in our package here, using the data that we've got on our, on our, the application without the Pepsi logos. Would someone like to second that?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yep.
I just want to understand, it sounds like ADR is saying one sign or the other, and you're saying both signs, and you're saying as submitted. So, I just want to make it clear, we're not.
Submitted without the Pepsi logos, without.
Correct, but there's two signs. There's a building sign, then they had another sign in the window that they wanted. ADR wanted one or the other.
No, I don't think that's right. It's just the one sign, right?
Yes, sir. I don't, I don't know a lot of window signs.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because that's not what was presented in the app.
Yep, it is. You're right, it's in the picture.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion to approve the sign.
I made the motion. I'll take your second, though.
I'll take the second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Let's move on. Item nine A in the, we want to skip nine A and go into the, somewhere else, or no, we're good, not nine A. Let's read item nine A into the record, if we could. Keep everybody here a little longer.
Okay. Ari Pollock, on behalf of Siborowski Associates LLC, requests consideration for amending Article twenty-eight dash four dash one of the Concord zoning ordinance.
Okay, if we could get a staff update on this. I think, Matt, you were going to give us a staff update.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
I'll yield the floor.
Um, so, you know, you have a proposal before you today that's been submitted by Siborowski Associates and their attorney, Ari Pollock. There's a staff memo, which I can review after, if you would like, about what the staff opinion is and analysis of the proposed request is, but essentially, it's two parts. The first is to allow, to create a conditional use permit for the Central Business Performance District that will allow an exceedance of the eighty-foot height limit by ten feet, go to ninety. Just so this, everybody's clear, in Concord, we set the height of a building from the average grade, and it is to the parapet. So, any mechanicals, elevator shafts, anything that's above that eighty feet is not part of the eighty-foot height limit. It's really for habitable space. The second is to, related to this, is also a conditional use permit to be able to obstruct the State House dome when viewed from certain portions of I- ninety-three, generally between exit thirteen and I-three-ninety-three, as well as I-three-ninety-three itself. There is an, our ordinance currently prohibits any obstruction of the dome, period, from those view sheds when constructing in the downtown area. With that, we can turn it over to the app, the proposer, if you want.
Proposer, just for the record, this is not an application. We're not here to discuss a specific, a specific job. We're here to, we're here to, to review the referral by city council to us, and we'll welcome you guys to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Ari Pollock. I'm with Gallagher Firm here in Concord, and I'm appearing tonight for Siborowski Associates LLC, the proponent or proposer of a zoning amendment to zoning Article twenty-eight four one. And to my right is Mark Siborowski, longtime Concord property owner, downtown landlord, developer. And to my right is Mark Siborowski, longtime Concord property owner, downtown landlord, developer. We do understand that this comes before the planning board as a referral from the city council, and that this hearing is intended to gather information, evidence, testimony that would help the planning board make its recommendations back to the council for a decision on the proposal. Competing with the motorcycle, excuse me. The proposal is relative to zoning Article 28-4-1, which includes the meat of the Concord zoning ordinances, dimensional regulations, the core development metrics like lot size, frontage, setbacks, coverage, and building height. They're all discussed with specificity in that section for each zoning district in the city. And specific to building height and specific to the zone that's relevant to the proposal, the central business district, building height is described in that section in two different ways. First, a maximum height, as Mr. Walsh just mentioned, a maximum height is set of 80 feet from the average surrounding grade. In other words, measure from the bottom to the top and stop when you get to 80. And this rule is absolute. It doesn't say finish a floor in progress. It doesn't say add height to complete your building program. It says do not exceed 80 feet, and then there's a period. Second is whether you're at or under 80 feet, there is a different section that says do not obstruct views of the State House dome. And interestingly, it's do not obstruct views of the State House dome from portions of Interstate 93. There's no other vantage point mentioned. There's no other place in the city mentioned. It's specific to the interstate. And interestingly as well, there's no discussion of the obstructions that exist today. Existing buildings, trees, bridges, roadway signs, no discussion. No discussion even of how partial or fleeting the obstruction that is placed may be. It simply says thou shall not. As to basic building heights of 90 feet versus 80 feet, the first item I was discussing, the proposal is a 12% increase. What does that mean in practice? 12%, 10 feet? What it means is the usual difference of one more floor or the completion of a partial floor that drawing that 80-foot line would eliminate. Or in some cases, a six-story building that could have had a seventh. From Main Street, a passerby on foot or in a vehicle, they'd be hard pressed to look upward and tell the difference between 80 and 90 feet. This is especially true when you have other provisions in the ordinance that talk about stepping back upper floors. You wouldn't necessarily even know they're there depending on your vantage point. And so I think you have to ask yourself, when you think about this kind of amendment, can the difference of 10 feet even be appreciated from that grade perspective? Meanwhile, the ability to finish a floor, which would be the ability to add leasable space, add more downtown housing, add retailers, entertainment venues, all of those things will hang in the balance with or without that 10 feet and with or without that additional floor. You, as the planning board, might be thinking, well, why wouldn't you just ask for a variance? I mean, after all, exceptions to the rules are exactly what variances are for. And I'll be happy to report that's what we did. Staff actually provided our ZBA application materials and meeting minutes in your packet linked through your agenda. You may have or could read those arguments, and you could also read through the ZBA's very thorough deliberation, and then its motion to deny those variances. We didn't receive them. The vote was three to two against. It's as close as you get, but it's still a no. And the sentiment from the ZBA, and these are my words, not theirs, but the sentiment, I thought, was quite clear, and I think you'll see it in the minutes. We love this project, but the ordinance plainly says differently. Variances, again, back to my words, variances are inefficient tools for progress. Variances are exception to rules, and variances are used to address hardships, and ordinances are drafted and adopted at moments in time, and they're always by their nature in the past. In this case, that moment was actually decades ago when this portion of the ordinance was shaped. And as you all know, things have changed. They always do. These passing decades have seen malls built that have fallen out of favor. They've seen schools built that need replacing. They've seen streets built that need widening. They've seen Main Street built, and that needed redesign, reinvestment, and now luckily, enhancement. Meanwhile, the City of Concord has discussed a widespread rezoning for years. Great idea, long overdue. Well-intended, but unfinished. In fact, a long ways away from finished. The draft of this work, interestingly, modifies the State House dome language. I'll get into that more in a minute, but rather than thou shall not, the draft says respect views of the State House dome. I'm not exactly sure what respect means, but it's a little less than thou shall not. And it may be exactly the kind of flexibility that we were seeking from the zoning board, but ran up against a very difficult variance test by New Hampshire law. Is the draft that says respect going to be adopted? I don't know any better than any of you. Meanwhile, there are good projects hanging in the balance. Narrowly tailored zoning amendments can be an important tool as an interim measure. We're not saying get rid of the effort to rezone. We're not saying get rid of the zoning board. They don't give anybody variances. We're saying zoning amendments can help bridge the gap that exists between zoning relief and a more widespread rewrite of zoning amendments. You have the staff memo from Mr. Walsh. He's here. His memo concludes, again, my words, not his, but that staff is supportive of the amendment with some suggested revisions. Why does staff support the amendment? Well, his memo's well-written. I'm sure you've all read it. But I think it's because 10 feet offers flexibility for developers to complete a development program that is responsive to needs in the community. It's responsive to shifting markets. It's responsive to the performance districts that are created in the ordinance to have development performance occur. And it's all sensitive to significant changes that occur in the marketplace and in the lending atmosphere over time. Staff explains that the various iterations of the city's master plan are at least consistent on encouraging downtown redevelopment, preserving historic buildings, and yes, specific to the Phoenix Hall, and we'll have more on that in a moment, mostly from Mark. And just think, some 10 years ago, if we think back 10 years to 2014, who would have thought we had a pandemic in our future that would intensify labor and housing shortages, shift the office and retail uses to background, and prioritize cyber shopping, warehousing, and distribution? I didn't see it coming. The board's very familiar with these types of planning studies that are drafted, submitted, and presented to mitigate building programs, impacts from traffic, parking, architectural integrity. I would submit to you that the planning board is the expert for the City of Concord when it comes to evaluating the pros and cons of a specific development proposal, a specific building program, a specific building height. Should there be guardrails? Yes, but that discretion exists, and if it's going to have discretion, this is a great place to have it. The one-size-fits-all zoning provisions, they need to function over decades, and they can only be varied in very rare circumstances. What's the proposal? The proposal is a conditional use permit. It's a common tool offered to municipalities and to planning boards by statute in New Hampshire, and it's used by planning boards, including this one, to consider the particulars of a proposal before an outcome is decided. It's not as simple as saying it's permitted, it's allowed, you get to do it. It's the details matter, and let's look at those details. Protection, and so it wouldn't be by right, it wouldn't be by special exception. In our proposal, it would be offering flexibility in development, in redevelopment, community planning, essentially saying, and essentially the board asking, if we do this, would it come out right? Now, I want to turn for a few minutes to protection of the views of the State House dome. On the one hand, it's a somewhat different consideration. It's not a metric or a linear measurement. It's a sentiment, really. It's a laudable, smart, historic sentiment, but it's a sentiment nonetheless. The current language about views from the interstate are from one vantage point, and only one, the interstate. None others. You might ask, what about views from Main Street? What about views from State Street? What about views from Store Street? From the sidewalk, from the rooftop, from the middle floor? Will a building built to 90 feet obstruct some or partial views from the interstate? Maybe, probably. Depends on where it is. Depends on what it is. But how important is this viewpoint? And I ask, how much more important is it than some of the other viewpoints from Main Street, from other places in Concord, against all the good things that can come from responsible development? A 90-foot building would not alter the State House one bit. There'd be no construction on the State House as a result of this proposal. Nothing in the zoning ordinance changes the State House, just the view of it, and only from one place, and only from a 60 mile an hour highway. Or 55, I guess my kids would be quick to correct me. Would you rather see the dome from a car window at 55 miles an hour? Or from a Main Street sidewalk, or the State House lawn, or a rooftop restaurant? Would you rather appreciate the heritage and history of the State House from a vehicle a half a mile away? Or from a fixed-point at near, or maybe even inside, the State House? Let's also remind ourselves that DOT is in the middle of what seems like a long planning exercise for the I-93 corridor, from exit 12 to 16, the exact same stretch we're talking about in this viewscape ordinance. DOT's plan and timeline are uncertain. The plan's already shifted around more than once. What we do know, however, is that redesigning the highway may well alter the... Excuse me, the elevation of the highway, the very place that we're measuring from, looking from. Views of the State House dome will also be affected when that elevation may change. And I'm not saying we're going to have the Concord, New Hampshire version of the big dig, but I am saying that some elements that are visible from the interstate today may be obstructed or invisible tomorrow. Speaking of heritage, the State House is, of course, worthy of preservation, and no one here tonight will speak any differently, I'm sure. Is it the only building that's worthy of preservation? No, we all know that as well. Main Street's full of history, architectural gems, buildings worth preservation. For those who know it, Phoenix Hall has a place on this list, undeniably. It's a special place with treasured history, but also an uncertain future. Mark's here to speak about the virtues of his beloved hall in a minute, but consider this. Having the flexibility to redevelop the CVS building, the damaged upper floors of the E&amp;P Hotel, that also provides the flexibility and physical connection to support and renovate Phoenix Hall. It's quickly coming down to both or none, not one or the other. And believe me, Mark is passionate about this building and its history, and he's looked at this question all different ways. His redevelopment plan includes a rooftop venue where the CVS is now, over where it is now. That would offer unparalleled views of the State House building, the lawn, and the dome. New and exciting attractions for Main Street, new market rate housing, new businesses, and most importantly, new life for an old Phoenix. Before I pass this on to Mark, I wanted to just share one more observation. We're all opining here, or will opine here tonight, on what's best for Concord, and you'll make your recommendations back to the council, who will decide the matter. We all love Concord, or we wouldn't be here. We all live and work here. Some of us passed through Concord for some... We all passed through Concord for something between moments and lifetimes. If Concord could talk, I wonder what it would say. I wonder, after hundreds of years of change and development, would it see a difference between 80 feet and 90 feet? And would that difference matter? Would it say that a view from a vehicle window a half a mile away is more important than the view from the... from Main Street, or from a building on Main Street, or from a person walking on Main Street? And would it say that the State House dome is more important than saving than Phoenix Hall? I don't think it would say those things. I think it would ask for flexibility so that progress can continue, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Mark Siborowski. We all know that the proposed zoning amendment before you tonight is for the central business in general, but it is undeniably closely linked to my project right now. So while you're here to look at the zoning amendment in general, I will speak specifically about my project and what that will mean. So again, my name is Mark Siborowski. I've lived in Concord for 45 years. I came to Concord to help my grandfather manage his properties in his later years of life. I've been developing downtown properties for 45 years and taking great pride in doing high-quality renovations that made downtown Concord a better place. My current project is by far my most ambitious. I want to demolish the existing building vacated by CVS a few years ago, as well as the E&amp;P Hotel occupied by Hilltop Consignment. In this place, I want to build a six-story mixed-use building with a partial seventh floor for a year-round rooftop restaurant. The Main Street level would be retail space. The second floor would be office space. Floors three through six would be market rate apartments, with a total of 36 market rate apartments being built. And the seventh floor would be the rooftop restaurant, which would only be approximately 70... 40% of the building footprint of the main building, and setbacks are not visible from Main Street. The rooftop portion would be primarily glass to capture the views from outside, with outside seating in the summer months. The project also includes restoring historic Phoenix Hall into a restaurant, music hall, event center. I have purchased a spectacular 1870s vintage bar to be a key element in the renovated Phoenix Hall. I plan to keep Phoenix Avenue as a crucial pedestrian link from Main Street down to Low Ave and to Store Street beyond. I will also add some small retail spaces in the basement level of the building to help change the character of Low Avenue for more than just an alleyway. The project requires the demolition of both the old CVS store, a one-story strip mall facade with no historical value that no one will miss. It also demolishes the old E&amp;P Hotel, now occupied by... on the first floor by Hilltop Consignment, with the upper floors completely dilapidated, uninhabited, with no means of egress whatsoever. If there was any way to incorporate this building into the new being building, believe me, we would have done it. We looked at it with my architects every which way to Sunday. There are a host of reasons why it doesn't work, which I'm happy to go into if the board would like to hear them. The Heritage Commission voted unanimously that the E&amp;P Hotel does not possess significant historical, cultural, or architectural value, and the benefits of the new building would achieve more public benefit than could be achieved by renovating the existing structure. The renovation of Phoenix Hall has been a priority of the city's master plan since 1997. In that master plan, the city had a detailed 20-page plan on how that could be accomplished, an in-depth analysis of a privately-owned property, something that is highly unusual in a municipal city master plan. Many of the concepts outlined in that plan have been incorporated in my current development plan. The only portion of the new building that will exceed the 80-foot height limit is the restaurant venue, which, as I said, is only approximately 40% of the footprint of the main building. Will it obstruct views of the State House dome from 93 North? Yes, it will, for a few seconds. It doesn't eliminate the view entirely. It obstructs it for a few seconds. What else do you see from 93? You see the backside of the shopping plaza, homeless camps, and mountains of trash. Not a very good look for our city. But what do you gain from my project? You exchange a few seconds of the view from 93 North for a new spectacular view of the Capitol dome from a rooftop. So you don't lose the view. You gain a new view that doesn't exist now. And from the highway, what do you gain? You gain a view of a lit-up rooftop venue with lots of glass, so you see people out there by day, and at night, you will see a lit-up glass venue that will add a lot of interest to the city skyline. You will also see a sign on the back of Phoenix Hall that simply says "The Phoenix", much like the Hotel Concord sign. I don't think many people pull off the highway to check out downtown Concord because they see the dome from the highway. see the dome from the highway. Seeing people on a rooftop venue by day, or a rooftop venue lit up at night, however, will make some people want to check it out. When they see the Phoenix sign, they may Google it out, may Google it out of curiosity, and see that as a spectacular music venue at the Phoenix with a restaurant and a rooftop venue next door, and decide to check it out. It adds elements of interest to our skyline from the highway that say, Concord is cool, let's check it out. So to summarize, what I think, what I feel my project does for Concord: it fills the most notable gap tooth in Concord's Main Street. It adds a spectacular view of the Capitol Dome from a publicly accessible space that does not currently exist. It adds interest and activity to Concord's skyline, as seen from ninety-three. It restores Phoenix Hall to a vibrant restaurant, music hall, and event center, achieving an important goal of the city's master plan since nineteen ninety-seven. It adds a prominent new mixed-use building containing retail, offices, thirty-six market-rate apartments, and a dynamic rooftop restaurant. It provides an increase in visitors to our downtown, helping to boost Concord's downtown economic viability and a boost in retail activity. Together, it adds up to increased tax base for our city, housing, jobs, restaurants, and entertainment. All the elements needed for a vibrant, healthy downtown. But none of these benefits can be realized without the adoption of this zoning amendment. And Phoenix Hall will remain a lifeless venue, still waiting for its chance to rise once again. Zoning is meant to allow worthy projects to happen, not impede them. The adoption of this zoning amendment will give this once-in-a-generation project a chance to become a reality. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark, for your, for your passion for the project. I know it's been, it's been something you've been trying to get through for an awful long time, so thank you.
It is.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you, Mark, for that overview. Is there a development plan currently in front of the Planning Board or working its way through?
No, let me take that one if I could. The answer is no, and the reason is because we were unsuccessful in obtaining variances that would have allowed us to deliver an application that would be found complete.
Thank you. And my follow-up, it's for you. So if I understand what you're saying, that the conditional use permit would still give this body the ability to look at development plans, taking comments from staff, and on a project-by-project basis, work with the applicant to, on a particular development. So it's not a wholesale, if this passes, then everyone in the city can go another ten feet?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
What you, just to clarify, what, what the, if the ordinance were to be adopted by the council, what the Planning Board may see is a site plan application for a building that exceeds eighty feet to ninety feet, and a conditional use application, or permit application, that would ask the Planning Board to grant that additional height beyond eighty feet. And just like the board sees now, coming at it from various other places in the ordinance, it would be a separate conditional use application.
And just a quick, and it's safe to assume that, as with any large development, the height of the building is only one item.
Is only what?
Would only be one item that, that...
Certainly, though, the site plan review would include all of the typical site plan items: traffic, landscape, lighting, architecture, building program.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add that, one, one thing I've been hearing is that people, some people are concerned that the adoption of this amendment will incentivize some buildings or landlords to demolish existing buildings, so they can go the extra height. And I, I honestly feel that is, economically, that will not be viable. This is a, they're apples and oranges. I have two buildings right now that are not economically viable. One, one is a one-story strip mall, which is, is a piece of junk. The second is a, is a, the Hilltop Building, which is not economically viable to renovate, either together with my project or separately. There's only four thousand eight hundred square feet on the two floors combined, and by the time you put in two stairs, an elevator, you would never, you would never recoup your, your, your investment if you tried to do it. And the, the, nobody, to take a building, a three or four-story building that, right now, is renovated, occupied, is economic viable, producing cash flow, I don't think there's a developer in the world that would tear down a building like that, just to go another story or two.
Okay, I don't want to spend too much time on this particular project, because it's not, it's not before us, but I do want to just clarify, because I got an awful lot of correspondence, that the, the E&amp;P Hotel, the E&amp;P Hotel is vacant, it's been vacant for...
Since nineteen fifty-six, about seventy, sixty-eight years.
There's been nobody there for an awful long time.
Lot of pigeons.
I think you had a fire there, I mean, it's, it's been, it's been, it's been just a hole in the, in the, in the fabric there for an awful long time. So those of you that are concerned about that, that's, that's the allay on the concern. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off here, okay? I'm gonna send you guys back. I do want to get a quick staff, another update from Matt on our purview, and it may have you come back up, so hang tight, but I do, I do want to address the, the CUP portion of it. It is a tool in our toolbox, and we use it a lot with a lot of different things. The plan, the zoning board is rigid by design, and, and you didn't meet the hardship for the, for the, for the zoning amendment, or the zoning appeal, but that doesn't mean that the project's a bad project. If there's a toolbox that we can take advantage of to look at that in a, in a different capacity, again, with the zoning laying the groundwork, being able to use the, the CUP is a really important piece for us. So I'll thank you, and I'll have you sit back, and I do want to get, again, our purview, Matt, for, for what we're here for tonight would be great.
So you're here tonight, Mr. Chairman, to discuss the proposal, decide if you want to make any recommendation to the City Council, either to proceed with the language that's been proposed, to modify that language, or not proceed with the concept at all. Just a couple of additional quick points, I know you have folks that want to speak. I would note that there is language already in the zoning ordinance in Article twenty-eight four-one G five, which takes, which has this exact same concept for areas of the Opportunity Corridor Performance District on Store Street, that is between Hills Avenue and Loudon Road, which is kind of where the Capitol Shopping Plaza is. And so this concept already exists, and in there, you're allowed to go from the forty-five foot height limit to eighty. So the criteria that's in the proposal from Mr. Pollak actually mimics that exact language, it's already in the zoning ordinance, see, that's where it came from. So if you have any questions about that, that's where it came from. I would note that that particular CUP has never been used, but I suspect that once the state demolishes the legislative parking garage, something might come into play someday. It's a whole other conversation. There's a nine-page staff memo that I provided to you, I'm not going to read it to you, but if this is something that you're interested in entertaining, the staff suggest that you might want to think about the following additional criteria. One, water pressure for spaces above the eighty-foot height limit. We often check water pressure for development projects anyway, but to make sure that there's sufficient pressure for fire and domestic, and that there is no negative impact of booster pumps on the rest of the system. Secondly, fire truck access, we have a tower ladder truck, and making sure that the tower ladder can access these habitable spaces above eighty feet. Photo simulations of the proposed building at both the eighty-foot and ninety-foot levels, so the board could have some data to make a decision on, to guide it. There are requirements in Section twenty-eight five forty-eight of the zoning ordinance which pertain to special development standards in central business performance in downtown. There are certain streets that require the building to be stepped back at ten feet, at the sixty-five-foot elevation. You might want to require that as a mandated requirement for this particular CUP to help with pedestrian scale. That might require an amendment to twenty-eight five forty-eight. Staff talks about some geography concerns, so right now, the proposal would be all of the Central Business Performance District. We note that there are sections of the Central Business Performance District that are in Pennecook Village. You probably don't want ninety-foot buildings on Village Street in Pennecook, you might want to think about that. So that's there. There's some discussion about, do you want ninety-foot building on sections of North or South State Street, recognizing that predominantly on the other side of the road, you have buildings that are one to two and a half stories, because there's a break there in the development pattern of downtown. Staff feels that, if crafted properly, that this could be a nice tool that could give the board some, some flexibility to make wise decisions, and will have a minimum impact on the community, especially when you're looking at these particular view sheds from ninety-three or I-393, when traveling at highway speeds. I would also note that the, the City Council recently adopted its goals for the upcoming two years, making interim zoning amendments was one of them, to try and facilitate economic development in downtown, but also to clean up some housekeeping issues in the ordinance.
I just want to make one point of clarification, because people tend to hear things and not put them into context, not that anybody in this room would do that, but that, I want to be clear, on a ninety-foot building on North State Street, where everything around it is one and a half to two stories, given the ordinance change that we're proposing and the process of the CUP, technically, they could put that on a plan, they could come to the planning staff and say, here's my plan, and using the CUP and the power of the CUP, the product, the project could be denied with public input, saying, I live next door, it's gonna shade my house, it's gonna do this, it's gonna do this. We, as the planning board, have the ability then to take that and say, while yes, the CUP is there to allow for some flexibility, you can't do that.
That's correct. Depending on what your criteria is for that CUP, you could absolutely do that.
It's not, it's, we're not talking about carte blanche, being able to put a building wherever you want it to be, you still have the wherewithal to come to the board and hear, you know, present your project, and we can, we can weigh the, weigh the benefits and take it from there.
As you do with all applications.
As we do with everything.
Yep.
Okay. Questions from the board for staff? I'm gonna open the public hearing, I, it, we have a lot of people here, I got you, Mr. Schweiger, so you put your hand down, I'll have you come up first, but let me just, I want to reiterate that every member of the board got every email that came in, so if you sent an email to Anne Marie, Anne Marie turned those emails around, sent them to all of the board members, so all of those comments have been read, are part of the record, they've been read by the board members, so I don't need people coming up and reiterating or reading an email that you already sent. If you've got new comments, again, we're here to talk about the change in the, in the ordinance, we're not here to talk about Phoenix Hall, we're not here to talk about demolition, and I will invite Mr. Schweiger up and start us off, if we could. Please, if we can keep the, keep the timing as quick as we can to get in here as many people, that would be great. Mr. Schweiger, watch that back of that chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, I'm Roy Schweiger, and I testified in favor of this project before the zoning board, because I think it would be good for the city. I do think that Mr. Carley made a correct decision, and maybe this is too important for just the zoning board to do it. So he is here now. I want to talk briefly on both items. Number one, one of the problems with the zoning ordinance is it doesn't have any background with it, and nobody here was around when it was written, basically. And, like, I don't know if that eighty feet is strictly above because you want Main Street to look the same, or because an eighty-foot ladder is what the fire department has, and already you won't be able to reach the back, even if it's eighty feet on the front. So I think that when you revise the zoning ordinances, you need to put in a why, as a note to each thing, so that the zoning board and others have a better idea of why that thing is in the ordinance. And I know one thing we talked about at the zoning board was the eighty feet was not a problem on the uphill side of Main Street, only on the downhill side. So I would think that part of what you have might be that you have this thing so that only the downhill side, you know, gets the, you know, huge amount, because you're measuring from the sloping ordinance and not from the front. I don't think that's important on the uphill side, or State Street, or anywhere else. So that would be my feeling on that. Find out why that's there, if it's the fire ladder, too bad, but if it's just to look like the rest of them, then allow it on the downhill side only. As far as the, looking at the State House, well, that's an interesting thing. The city just spent a big bundle of money to hire a consultant to say, can we build a plaza or a bridge over ninety-three, which would definitely block the view of the State House? So I would say that overall, you know, people are not convinced that they need to see the State House from every instance, but I think maybe your conditional use permit's the right thing, because what we don't want is, if Mr. Zabrowski gets this extra height for a very special project, that everybody else in the city feels like, we can do an extra special project, too. We need to, you know, we don't want to block the entire view of the State House, we only want to block it very briefly, just like it is with the Hotel Concord, just like it is for the trees now. So I think that you need to, you know, that view of the State House is very important to people, we're the capital city, we want people to see the State House. I'm even a little bit unhappy that he wants to have the restaurant lit up. I hope that part of the conditions will be, he turns off the lights when the restaurant closes, so you can see the State House better. And in particular, once again, the city is proposing to spend a bundle of money to light up all the facades downtown, and I think we, as part of this ordinance, we should forbid that. If we want people to identify the State House as being special, we don't want everything else lit up, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Schweiger? Thank you for your testimony. Who's next? Mr. Sink. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, my name is Tim Sink, I'm president of the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here on behalf of the chamber to support the proposed zoning amendment. I will not be redundant, I think Mr. Zabrowski and Mr. Pollak made excellent points of why this is such a great idea, but just briefly, from the chamber's perspective, we just feel that the benefits of this project far outweigh any potential negatives. It's a great project, it will advance the destination downtown, and provide a lot more benefits to the citizens of Concord, additional visitor spending, greater tax revenue for the city, so we would just hope that you support this, this proposal.
Great. Questions from Mr. Sink? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Christopher Carley, and I'm a resident of Concord, and I am here to encourage you to endorse the proposed ordinance and recommend that the City Council pass it. I won't go into the technical details, they've been covered quite thoroughly by Mr. Pollak and Mr. Zabrowski. My main issue is that, it has to do with the philosophy of zoning. In this case, I think the purpose of the zoning regulations in downtown area is to preserve and also, if possible, promote the health of the downtown area, which is obviously a very special part of the city. When an ordinance or a regulation conflicts with something that is clearly in the order of conserving or improving downtown, then it's working against itself, it's working across purposes, and it needs to be adjusted. And I think that's exactly what's being proposed here tonight, and that's why I encourage you to endorse it. I have nothing else to add.
So I'm not gonna let you get away that easily, so I...
I had a feeling you might not.
I, I, just for the record, if you could just state your other day job for the record?
I'm a member of the zoning board, yes.
A member of the zoning board, and here, and here, as, as stating the testimony that, that, again, I think you heard Ari say in his meeting, or in his portion, that, you know, this is, this is something that needs to be brought forward for this particular reason, to allow us a little flexibility when zoning is very rigid, sorry for the noise, zoning is very rigid, this gives us a little bit of flexibility to use the CUP.
Absolutely. I think anytime we can take work off the table for the zoning board, I'm happy.
Amen. Any questions for Mr. Carley? Matt?
Thank you. Could you just remind me the vote of the zoning board when they came before you?
It was three to two.
Thank you.
Three to two, yes. Okay.
There were two votes, there was a vote for, a request for rehearing that was four to one. That was the second vote. But the first vote was three to two.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
I'd like to sign in, too. Chris, sorry. We should find another place to put the sign in, so we can have people come up quicker. Come on up, sir. The yellow, the yellow slip. Just want you to hop down to that other table, just bring the sign in to the table down there, so we can have people sign in.
Down here?
Yeah.
Is it an official city pen?
Yeah. That'd be great. Thank you. Thanks, Alec. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, my name is Bobby Siegel. I'm a lifelong resident of Concord, my family, the Sandals, have been here since the beginning of the twentieth century, so it's four generations.
I thought you were gonna say the beginning of time, and I was gonna...
So, you know, I was born here, I will probably die... So, you know, I was born here, I will probably die here, God willing. I love this city. So, as I approach my 60th birthday, you know, I've seen the, the city evolve from a sleepy, strong neighborhood-based community to a vibrant downtown with, with decent dining, strong embracement of the arts. However, our great city has, still has an opportunity to continue to evolve. So I'm here to encourage you to pass the proposed amendment to the central business district. The proposed amendment would have the effect of encouraging redevelopment in the downtown corridor by enabling the planning board to evaluate development proposals on a case-by-case basis, and in the context of conditional use criteria. So my family is currently evaluating a property we have in, in the city of Manchester, it's a large piece of property. And while comparison is the thief of joy, the city's attitude towards this project has been nothing but supportive and encouragement. However, I live in Concord, I'm a Concordite. So your vote, your vote to support this amendment will send a message to developers and entrepreneurs that Concord is open for business. So I thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Comparison is the thief of joy. Very, very prophetic. You can ask for questions. Who's next? Come on up, sir. Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
Hi, so I'm Eric Gallagher, that's Gallagher without an H, so that means no relation to the other firm mentioned previously, the Gallagher, Callahan and Cartrow, which does have the H in it. So I am here in support of this proposed rule change. I'm a lifelong Concord resident, well, mostly except for when I went away to the school in DC about a decade ago, but other than that, I've lived here my whole life. Currently live in the JFK Building on Thompson Street, which is, which is 10 stories tall. It's a pretty tall building, it may actually already be taller than the limit being considered here, I haven't measured it myself, but yeah, I thought the, the speaker who started this off made some good points about the view from being able to see the State House dome from the roof of the building is, I, I consider it to be highly preferable to being able to see it from the highway. Like, I'm able to see, our laundry room in the JFK Building is up on the top floor, so I get to see the State House dome whenever I go up to do laundry, and yeah, I, I think it's basically a question of, you know, what, yeah, while a, a building may block the view for some, it also provides a view for others, so basically, who do we want to prioritize here? The people who actually live here, or the people who just pass through on the highway occasionally? And I, I think we should prioritize the view for the people who actually live here, and, you know, use, use it as kind of an incentive to actually come into downtown. You know, you want to see the State House dome, get off the highway and come in here. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm in support of this amendment, it could actually go even further, I'd remove the height limit entirely, I would like to see Concord have a skyscraper at some point, which might be a bit of a pipe dream, but, so, yeah, it's a step in the right direction, at least.
Great. Thank you for your testimony.
Thanks.
Okay. Who's next? Welcome back, Mr. Cohen, if you could state your name for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Cohen, I'm a 53-year resident of Concord, and I'm proud to say both my daughters, Jane and Georgia, are residents also, they're adults, and they also chose to stay in Concord after they graduated and had a family. The reason I'm testifying in favor of this tonight is it's because of the work that this planning board, the planning board, has done in the last 10 years, and also with the city council and other departments in the city, and this is focused on what happened with Main Street. And it's amazing to me that I can go on a Google site, I can go on a travelogue, and when Concord is mentioned now, it's actually a destination spot, that they're saying, there's like 10 or 15 things to do in Concord. 60, 70 years ago, I understand why, that they would have the dome, well, when it was lit again, it went out for a while during administration, but hoping to draw people in to Concord by saying, what is that? And, of course, what we do is we, we're pushing that, and so someone come in on the weekends, and the State House is closed, or some other holidays it was closed, it's funny as heck. But now, we don't, I'm not saying we don't need the State House lit, or the dome, or that vision, but Concord currently, in the last three to four years, is a destination spot of its own, it's because of the venues, of the arts, nice restaurants, shopping, et cetera. And what I find interesting about this project, it's a microcosm of what we did on Main Street. It's providing everything in one small location that what we're also provided from South Main Street up to North Main Street. And I do understand why you'd want, again, 67 years ago, why there would be a sightline concern on 93, but it's, it's not needed today. I still, I mean, I enjoy seeing the dome, I came up from Manchester this morning, and there's trees blocking the site, they're all set visually, and I'm, I'm saying, just for this split second, what this building would do by blocking it doesn't compare to why people are getting off 93 or coming up here from anywhere, because of, again, what you guys have done, and the city council's done. So, and I'm very much for this, obviously.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Thanks very much. Next, sir?
His testimony has nothing to do with Phoenix Hall.
Nothing to do with what?
Well, yes, it has something to do with Phoenix Hall, but I'm only going to mention it once. And really, just, just the difference, thank you very much for the opportunity-
If you could just state your name for the record?
Sorry. Jeff Mathis.
Okay, Jeff.
Concord resident.
Welcome to the table.
Thank you. Pretty much, I, I'd like to add to the, to the other, the words, is bringing in RSA 674 into the, to the central business district, it really does bring new opportunities into the town. And it continues the Main Street project. So, you know, this is kind of a continuation of what we've seen in the past, you know, moving up to the new land use regulations, stuff like that, will, will help a lot. On that, all my comments have been covered.
Great. Thank you very much for your testimony. Sorry, I got you next.
Sure.
Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Thank you, Paul Provost, I've been a resident of Concord for 22 years, and sort of perspective here today, I lead a business that is right on Main Street, right across the street, one block down. I want to talk about viability of downtown from a different angle. A week ago, in the Wall Street Journal, the Journal reported that the vacancy rate in office space, just office nationally, is 28%. We all know the reasons why, it's pandemic, the redefinition of work, but there's been a voice in Concord who's here tonight, Mark, who's been a leading voice saying, you know, one of the challenges, despite all the good things that have happened in downtown Concord, is a lack of diversity. We have too many employees who come to work at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock and go home at 5:00 o'clock. Now, Mark being Mark, when he would say those things, would say, they work in support of the State House, the legislature, law offices, or banks, and all the time, he would stand in front of our bank when he said it. And so I asked him nicely, could you just change the bank every once in a while? And he did.
He didn't ask you to change your hours and stay open until 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night?
I think he did, actually. It's a funny point, but it's a good point. The point I make, I don't want to be redundant to others, is all the good things that have happened in downtown Concord, from an economic standpoint, the challenges still exist. We have to continue to work to bring people to Concord, because they have so many choices, they're staying home on Mondays and Fridays, and working out of their living room, and we just need to continue to do, consider things like this, to continue to draw them here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Yep.
My name is-
Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
My name is Dean Morrison, and I am vice president at Concord Hospital, retired, past president of the Chamber of Commerce, working with Tim Sink, and chair of the board at Red River, chair of the board at Canterbury-Shekka Village. So I have been involved in many opportunities to improve the, the life for citizens of Concord. I, I am here to testify wholeheartedly in favor of this amendment. I think it gives all of you an opportunity to have a tool, to be more flexible, to be able to make intelligent decisions about the growth. Concord is a vibrant, growing city, it needs to continue to evolve, and this gives you the opportunity to make good decisions about how that should happen. So thank you very much, and I hope that you recommend this to the city council to approve it.
Thank you for your testimony. Scott?
Did he sign the sign?
Whoopsie. Mr. Morrison, can we just have you sign in? Sorry. Come on up, Claudia. Scott, raise your hand for you.
I'm Scott Walker's wife.
Welcome, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Claudia Walker. I'm an alumni of the planning board.
I know it.
And I look around, and I see that I still, not still see people that were on the planning board when I was, but also see good people here at the planning board. This is my speech, I always write a speech, and I always tear it up, because this was all about how wonderful Mark Siborowski is, how long I've known him, how much I think his, his project is critical to downtown, but my husband and I have sat, and many people in this room that I can look around and see, at, at venues where we work and work and work for hours and weeks and months to write a new zoning ordinance. And so I apologize, because we made a mistake with this one. We did it three times, I think, is that correct? Three times that we sat and worked on that. So, the point is that things change, and it's changed dramatically, and what Mark is going to do is something that should be done, and there are going to be other things that change down the road, but you can't make something that lasts for years and years and years without it changing. All of these nice things I have to say about him, I think, I know you already know, but I say, if I were in your shoes, again, sitting behind in the other side, I would definitely work, vote for this, and I hope that you will vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. You could just sign in, Claudia. Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
Yes, my name's Mary Rose Deek. I'm a former lab scientist, three for the state of New Hampshire, and I've lived here since 2001. I'm concerned about this project, because the Huntsman Nano Tech Company has been here using nanotech in the food and water on the citizens of New Hampshire. I've been scratching, I've been scratching black specks-
Does this have anything, anything to do with the zoning ordinance?
Yes, because I eat there, at that Wertz restaurant, and the other restaurants in town, the nanotech is black, looks like specks, it comes out of people's cell phones and computers.
We, we don't have time for this, I'm sorry.
No, the, the thing is-
No, I'm sorry, gonna have to cut you off, I, I don't want to have to have you removed, but unless you've got something specifically to say regarding our zoning-
You raised the, the polls on, on Fort Eddie Road.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you to step back, please. Step back, please.
Well, it's evil. It's evil what you're doing to people.
Please, please step back.
You should reject this evil project.
Please step back. Come on up.
You're hurting people.
I got somebody, oh yeah, come on up. Hang on, Alyssa.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. If you could state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Terry Parker, I'm a resident here in Concord, not lifelong, I came fairly recently, and I came here to show my support for the project, but I think what's more important, really, than the project, is the, the amendment and the, the importance of flexibility in your rulemaking, and I think that that goes towards, you know, a more efficient system of government and, and decision-making, and I don't have anything else to add other than that, but I just hope that point is not lost.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. I got somebody over here, hang on a second. Alyssa, come on up. Mr. Constant, I'll get you next, I apologize. If you could state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Alyssa Alfieri. Thank you, Chairman.
Welcome.
Thank you to all of the board for listening to us today. I own Lalee's Designer Resale, it's a business at 7 North Main Street, and I have been working downtown in Concord for 16 years now. I am the immediate past chair of the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce, former chair of the Concording Professional Network, and president of In-Town Concord's Board, so I have a vested interest in the downtown and what happens here, and how it impacts the business environment and that economy, because I think that Concord's most unique feature is how locally focused that small business community is. And so, we have this really, really unique thing happening here, where we have one franchise downtown, right, at Subway, and that's it. And so, it is something that makes us positioned for tourism in a way that would really, really benefit this local community first, right? Like, it's not going to spread around to some CEO that lives overseas somewhere, and so when we're talking about trying to marry the nuance of progress with history, I think that the nuance of this proposed amendment change actually helps that, and it gives that nuance back to this board, to be able to say, hey, we want this to happen, or could you change that, to protect that history. I think we also have people, I could sing Mark praises for days, and we don't have time for it, but there is no one more vested in the history of this downtown as a building owner than that person in, in Siborowski Associates. So I think that this would be, if we were to refer to it as a tester, you know, the first project, that would be utilizing the, you know, the CUP program. I think that it's something that you can also take back later on also, and you can provide more commentary on future projects, and so, without taking up any more time, I just really am in favor of this proposed amendment change.
Great. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thanks. I saw, yep, come on up. A twofer. You don't know the Constant brothers unless you come together, right? So.
We have to get it.
I noticed he puts you in front of the microphone, Dave.
You can do that.
Welcome to the table, if you guys could state your names for the record?
I'm Dave Constant.
Hi, John Constant, we're owners of Constantly Pizza. I just want to say we're very much in favor of this project. Our Main Street is one of the nicest Main Streets in New England. The city does an incredible job in cleaning it, maintaining it, keeping the sidewalks clear in the winter, everything cleaned and looking good in the summer. I think a project like this is only going to improve the downtown, also create other people that might want to come down and fix up some other buildings that could use in renovation, too. Totally for it.
And I think Concord is a destination spot now, and is becoming more of a destination spot, and I, I don't think that the visibility of our great capital is going to, or the non-visibility is going to hinder that. I think people are guided by technology today, and cool places to go, and venues, and nice restaurants, and, you know, that's what they're, they're guided by their cellphone today, and unfortunately, when they get off the highway, they are guided by that, not the visibility, and I think they're going to come here anyway.
You get a restaurant, you get a, you get a rooftop deck coming in your future, or?
We'd love one. It would be cool.
We might be here, you know.
Thank you very, thank you very much, thank you for your testimony. Just watch that chair, make sure it doesn't go off the back edge of the, of the thing. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Thank you. My name is Micheline Before, and I'm about a 20-year resident, and I wasn't planning on testifying, but I have a little anecdotal for you. This morning, I run the CEO and Family Enterprise Center, which is based out of UNH, and I held a board meeting in Concord today, and I had nine board members come from around the state, one was from Concord. And we happened to be in the- Concord. And we happened to be in the Oran Reno Board Room, which is beautiful and the view of Concord. And the comments from the people from around the state on my board about our city, it was pretty impressive. Some hadn't been back in years and what they liked was the diversity of buildings, the things they could see out those windows going on. And people started talking about the different projects. And I bragged a little bit about Phoenix Hall because it's close to my heart. And I want to assure you that no one of them said, but the view of the State House from 93 coming in. So, I just wanted to add that to the mix. Thank you for your consideration.
Since you mentioned Oran Reno, we'll have to have Peter Berger come up from Oran Reno. So, I don't know all these people. I just, everybody's a downtown person and I'm a downtown person, so.
Picking up, my name is Peter Berger. I'm the President of Oran Reno, which is a downtown business. And picking up on what Micheline said, it was great. It was a nice coincidence that she was there. But I will say that as a business owner of a growing business, the flexibility to have a zoning ordinance that, or giving the Planning Board the ability to have some flexibility in these decisions is good for our business because it allows for the development of vibrant projects downtown, which makes it much easier for us to recruit young people to come to places like Oran Reno. Concord's not traditionally been that easy to get young people to come work in. Most of them, including lots of our kids, tend to go down to the larger metropolitan areas, but they're taking notice of the cool things that are happening on our Main Street. And the ability to have flexibility in the zoning ordinance by way of this type of an amendment, I think, helps that process.
So, from the other side of the equation, from the, you guys practicing law, you do a lot of real estate law, does the ability to have this CUP in the toolbox for you guys open up different opportunities? Does it make you look at projects a little differently where you know there's no hard no stop on it? I mean, you can appreciate Ari's position he's in, but does it give you the ability to address things and look at things any differently?
Yeah, I think having flexibility and to make a compelling case rather than going through a very difficult zoning process. It's hard to get variances. I think this makes a lot more sense, gives a lot more latitude to the consideration of good projects that will help the city.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. Sir, come on up. Mr. Norton, it's good to see you back. Welcome to the table if you could state your name for the record.
William Norton. I'm here in Concord and it's good to be seen, better to be seen than viewed. I just wanted to make one comment.
So, that goes right up there with Mr. Siegel's comment. That's better to be seen than viewed. We're gonna put that down in the record as well, so.
One of the underlying themes of the current master plan is downtown viability. And one of the exciting things about the project we're looking at is 36 at-market units of housing. It's a critical piece of our future success. We have a lot of institutional housing, but vibrant and economically viable. You've got to balance the institutional with the private sector housing. You need rooftops with discretionary income. I think this CUP is a great way to deal with that. We've talked a little bit about Store Street and other areas, the 80-foot limit, et cetera, that the need for at-market housing is a real key element of our viability. And any tool that can help achieve that is important. And I do this for a living. So, I can tell that adding a story makes the difference between a project that flies or doesn't fly. Cost is in the dirt, the infrastructure is the underground, you're spending millions of dollars before you even get to the first floor. And so, it's sustainable and reasonable that another half a floor can make a difference in whether a project is bankable or not.
Perfect. Thank you for your testimony. Welcome back. If you could state your name for the record.
My name's Frank Lemay. I've been a business owner in Concord for 35 years. I just wanted to point out, 1976 I came to this area. And Concord was, there was nothing in Concord. They closed the doors at 6 o'clock and weekends, there was no one here. And I don't even think they put the C.H. sidewalks out on Sunday. And then the mall came and it got even worse. And Concord's come so far, so far. And there's an old saying, if you're not moving forward, you're falling behind. And this is just a tool that will help you move forward. Be flexible. I sat on a committee looking at the zoning ordinances and everybody who consults in that lives life in squares. I think that's because they're from the Midwest. But everything's different in Concord and in New England. And I think it just gives you the ability to look at everything. And last thing is, when you're riding down Interstate 93 and you look at the State House and what we're talking about, you look up at about an inch high and it lasts for less than a second. And if you look away for more than a second. So, that's negligible in this thing, you know. And all the benefits of doing that. So, everything else Ari already told you.
Thank you for your testimony. If you could just sign in, that would be great. In the back, gentleman in the back. Hi, if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, Ron Rainer, retired engineer. And thank you for this opportunity before the Planning Board. I basically endorse the project. I do support it. But I would suggest that after reading the suggested amendment, unless I was remiss in not reviewing all of the sections prior there to, I would say that some of it needs clarity. Section 6 of the proposed amendments, it references average grade. Okay, define average grade. Is that from the street? Is that from the front? Is that from the back? Because of the sloping topography on this section of Main Street. It says a no case shall it exceed 90 feet, but then there are numerous references within the proposed amendment that says would exceed the height limit. Well, I didn't realize until I read the paper today and Matt's presentation tonight that the height limit is really at 80. And this would be an exception to make it go to 90. It just needs to be clarified. Again, I basically support it. I support the conditional use permit approach, the concept, because it should be on a case-by-case basis. And I don't want developers, I'm sure as everyone in the room wouldn't want developers to take this as cartwash. Okay? So, case-by-case is appropriate. And I hope so that I suggest Council approve it. But with Mark going forward on this project, presumably, I hope he addresses down the road parking, which we all know is a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rainer. If you could just sign in on your way out, that would be great. Can't testify if you've got something else on the agenda later on in our meetings. So, welcome to the table if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Jonathan Chorley and I do have a letter that I did not get into Anne-Marie in time, so I'll circulate it. And as of that and all the remarks up to this point, I simply say I'm highly supportive of this amendment. I endorse most of the things I've heard tonight. I have little to add other than that I appear before these Boards a lot. And I think the CUP tool is really a much more nimble tool than the variance tool. By definition, the zoning Board really isn't allowed to consider a totality of circumstances. The Planning Board is. And I think that decision-making in that context is just, is better for all of us. I realize we're talking a lot about Mark's project and I hope this amendment creates a path for that wonderful project to happen. I know it's not a spot-zoning project and theoretically, other projects could take advantage of that path. That doesn't scare me at all. I hope we, I don't think we'll see many of those projects for the reasons that Mark alluded to, but I hope I'm wrong. By definition, those projects will be large-scale, add to the vibrancy of downtown, add to the upward momentum of downtown, and add significant tax base.
So, you've developed a lot of projects in the area and certainly in Concord. Mark's comments regarding, and again, it was a theme of emails that we got, that there was a concern that buildings would be torn down to make bigger buildings. Do you see that as a, I mean, it's a possibility, sure, it's a possibility, but-
I completely agree with Mark that you don't see a lot of redevelopment to begin with. Where you do see it, you see it really on lighted sites. And there really aren't any left. I mean, the developed functioning buildings, they're just honestly too valuable to buy, knock down and start again. Maybe when we get to Portsmouth values, you'll see that, but we're a long way from that.
Great. If you could just hand that over to Matt and sign in on your way out, John, that would be great. Sir? Hi, if you could state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Jack Crisp. I'm an attorney. I practice law here in Concord with my daughters. And our office windows look right out onto the buildings that we're talking about today. I think the proposed CUP would be a terrific asset for the city. And I think if you're questioning whether that would be an asset, just simply look at what we're talking about today. This, if this were adopted and enabled Mark's project to go forward, you would be accomplishing two things. One is, you would preserve a very significant historic property here in Concord. And you would also be adding something very new and very vibrant to the city all at the same time. And I came to Concord in 1975 to go to law school. And like Frank Lemay said, there wasn't much here in 1975. But there's a lot here today. I'm not a resident of Concord. I admit I'm a resident of Boe, but my office is right here in downtown Concord. We've been there since 2010. And so, I would encourage you to adopt this and urge the City Council to do the same. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. Can only have an attorney in a row. Sorry, Jim.
So, that means Jim can't testify?
Not that type of attorney.
Welcome to the table if you could, touche. If you could state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Jim Rosenberg and I appreciate the opportunity to be here and join the chorus of citizens and business owners before you who rise like I do to support this amendment. And the conditional use is what I would wish to speak to. In my line of work, the one thing that is applicable is bright line issues. When there are bright lines, it takes from you your ability to apply your intellect and your common sense and your education and your experience here as community members to consider on a case-by-case basis the pros and cons of any project before you. And this tool, as others have said, gives you that opportunity. The bright line rule that existed that, as you described at the outset of this gathering, simply prohibits anything above a certain measurement, really takes from you the good judgment that the citizens of this community have put in your hands. And so, all we wish to do, I think, with the proposal before you is return to you the ability to be flexible in your consideration of a case-by-case basis, the pros and cons of a project. And when you get to the pros of this project, I hope that you consider Mark and his experience because the project is potentially enormous. And I rise both because I'm a citizen of the city. I've been one for a long time. I was born in Concord. I went to Concord High with Matt Hicks, graduated the same year, believe it or not. My daughter is born here, my wife too, but I'm also an immediate neighbor. And so I thought it would be helpful to hear from one of us. I'm a member of the LLC that owns 107 Store Street, which is the location of the Shaheen and Gordon Law Firm, and I'm also a member of that law firm. And we recognize and I think would benefit from a downtown that is vibrant as all before we have described. And don't have any concern over this particular project. If it is eight feet taller than the current rule would allow. And so, for those reasons, we hope that you support this conditional use so that we can return to those that we want to have it, the confidence to make decisions like these. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. Come on up. I got one. Hold on. I'll get you in just a sec. Emily, welcome to the table.
Good evening.
If you could state your name for the record.
Yeah, Emily Ricard. I am here to advocate for this on behalf of the Concord Young Professionals. I am the current Chair as well as the Board of Directors for the Concord Historical Society. So, it's past 8:30, so I'm going to use my cellphone to read a message that I wrote. I'm going to turn into a pumpkin. So, I am here to advocate for the proposed zoning changes that would benefit the development as the city, for the city as a whole. These changes are not merely an assessment on paper. They represent a once-in-a-generation opportunity that can transform and restore some of Concord's finest historical gems. The city has worked hard to be a place where people can come and not just to pass through, but to linger, to explore and to learn. These zoning changes paved the way for that precisely. I have been under the impression that we want to create a destination that displays our historical charm, cultural richness and vibrant energy. The vibrancy isn't just for us. It's an invitation to everyone who steps foot in our city. The City Council has long emphasized the importance of expanding our tax base. These zoning changes align perfectly with that vision. By encouraging responsible development, we can expand our tax revenues without compromising our character. My generation wants to be woven into the fabric of Concord. We want to coach the Little League teams, contribute to local nonprofits and serve on boards that shape our community. But here's the challenge, the affordability. These zoning challenges can be our lifeline. We need people to move into downtown housing, freeing their starter homes for this generation to move into. So, for those reasons, I am in support of this project.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. All right, we're getting a little long in the time here, so we'll try to be as quick as we can. Welcome to the table if you could state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. My name is Tom Fratato and I'm with an organization called Catch Neighborhood Housing here in Concord. And I am here in full support of the proposed amendment. I believe I've done some real estate development throughout New England. And I believe an amendment like this will put, as John had mentioned, put the authority back in the hands of where it belongs, the Planning Board, to be able to look at each and every development by its own merit. I don't need to say anything about Mark's Phoenix Hall project. I think it's fantastic and I think you've heard a lot about that. But the reality is, this type of amendment is the right thing to do to avoid the hard rules and handcuffed zoning board. So, I am in full support of the amendment and obviously of the Phoenix Hall project.
Great. Thank you very much for your testimony. Oh, okay. Keep looking to the left. Look to the right.
Hi, I'm Sue McCoo. I've been a city resident for years, downtown retailer for 45. And I also own Hilltop Consignment Gallery, which is in 56 North Main Street, part of this project. And although, anyway, so I get to live in that building. And as many know that although it's lovely, it is, there's not much left from 1850 when it was built. So, and nothing would probably pass code now. It's an old building. So, despite all that, I've also been on the Complete Streets Program. And for downtown Concord, as much as we hate to have older buildings come down, the only thing that's really truly left on that building is the facade and some of the beams in the basement. The rest of it's been, the building's been redone three or four times in the last 150 years. So, it would be a truly transformative project for downtown. It just would change how things are. And yes, I will have to move the store, but for Concord, it's well worth it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome to the table.
Brian Murphy.
Thank you.
I'm the owner of Boyce Highlands here in Concord, New Hampshire, manufacturer of architectural millwork. There's not much that I can add other than I wholeheartedly support this project. We do take Mark's advice when customers come from around the country. We get off the highway and we come to downtown Concord to show them. And there's not a person in the last 10 years that we've brought to Concord that hasn't been absolutely amazed with all the work that you folks have done. And when we get people to come in early in the mornings, the city crews there cleaning that place up is absolutely incredible. So, this would be a great project for us to support. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Sir? Welcome to the table if you could state your name for the record.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the Board. My name's John Duval. I live in East Concord. I've worked and lived in Concord since 1986. I commute down Interstate 93 every day. And this morning, in preparation with this testimony, I was actually making note of the landscape of Main Street as I drove through just after sunrise. And I noted that it was a beautiful morning and the sun- And I noted that it was a beautiful morning and the sun shone and the dome lit up. And I focused on the dome as far as I could through the city. And there were many opportunities starting at 15W, all the way through past 15E and Exit 14. And I got to the point where I think the impact of the ordinance change would impact the view. And as a retired law enforcement officer, I found it prudent that I should probably pay attention to the road in front of me. Because at 55 or maybe a little faster, it was best that I was looking forward and not to the right. And I had the opportunity later in the morning to drive north and starting at Exit 13, the view was spectacular. And it's more peripheral. You see the dome. It's there, but you're not really looking at it and staring at it. So I concur with all the testimony this morning. I support the proposal, and I'll end there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Herschlag. Distracted, yeah. 55, right? You were only going 55 for the record, Mr. Duvalle? Welcome back to the table, Mr. Herschlag. If you could just state your name for the record?
Sure, my name's Alan Herschlag. Thank you for providing the opportunity to testify. Though I find myself in an unusual position this evening. I'm going to disagree with everyone who's come before me.
Shocking, is that it?
Hell unusual.
Tell us why you're going to disagree.
So let me start with the thought that there's been some buildings that, or at least one building that was built recently that partially blocks the view of the State House. And we want to be very clear that that wasn't a precedent. Just a quick look back at the Hotel Concord building. When the project came before the planning board for approval, the vote was delayed one month as the board, after being informed, realized they had not required the applicant to provide information that would determine the building would not obstruct the view of the State House dome. At the next monthly meeting, and just moments before the meeting was set to begin, the applicant provided a report to the board. Until this time, the report had not been available to the planning department, the planning board, or the public. At the previous meeting, after public testimony had been taken, the chair closed the public hearing portion of the meeting. No new public testimony would be allowed at the second planning board meeting, when the engineering report was made available. The planning board accepted and approved the applicant's report after much discussion, ruling that it did not obstruct the view of the dome. I had requested that the determination be delayed until the city administration, and the public could have a chance to review and comment on the applicant's report. Because no public testimony was being allowed, my plea was not considered. After the building was constructed, a portion of the State House dome view was obstructed. The obstruction of the State House dome should not be considered a precedent. No request for obstructing the view of the State House dome had been made by the applicant. No waivers or variances were requested. In fact, it was the applicant's report that assured the planning board the view of the State House dome would not be obstructed. The stated intention of the applicant was there would be no blocking of the State House dome. The obstructing of the view of the State House dome only occurred because of a lack of due diligence by the planning board. None of these, none of the current members were on the board at the time.
Just for clarification, okay.
You're welcome. So I don't want to spend too much time with this, but clearly, in our master plan, at least in two instances, it's noted that it's aspirational not to block the State House dome. And then there's numerous citations in the, certainly code referencing that the State House dome shouldn't be blocked. Couple of things. One, Mr. Pollack stated that there's no definition of how long it should or shouldn't be allowed to be. You know, how, you know, if there's no determination of the timeframe. And should it be a fleeting moment? It should be a large moment? But I think it's fairly clear when it talks about no building or sign, a sign post, and it doesn't define the size of a sign. So any size sign that would block the dome from the highway would violate our zoning, our current zoning codes. Mr. Pollack also noted that the only, that it's only the view on 390, I'm sorry, on 93 that isn't allowed to block the State House. But 28548F talks about both I-93 and 393. And then Mr. Pollack also notes that there may be some conflict between the Table of Development Design Standards and the zoning codes that refer to not allowing to block the State House dome. But it's very clear in the Table of Dimensional Regulations that those maximum heights are only allowed, subject to, and I'll read the dimensional standards, 24, 28, 41H, that's subject to all other provisions and standards of this ordinance and other local, state, and federal laws, rules, and regulations. So the maximum height at 80 feet currently is only allowed, should it not interfere with any other current zoning ordinances. So let me just finish this up. I think you'll be glad to have that happen, but it will be a bit long-winded.
Just go, 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 go.
Okay. So while the height of the building for the development of Phoenix Hall, CVS, and the former EMP Hotel parcels appears to be the main point of discussion, the most significant issue is the introduction of a zoning amendment that will allow for the blocking of the State House dome. There are those who have recently pushed to rebrand our city's image. The fact is Concord has been, is branded as the state's capital. And while our city is known for more than just being the state's capital, I can't imagine why some are in such a rush to remove the dome as a landmark for all those who drive through our city. Why is there this rush to go down the slippery slope of removing the view of the dome? Because the vagueness of the proposed zoning amendment will lead us down that road. There isn't anything in the proposed amendment that would prevent the planning board from entirely blocking the State House dome as cars drive by on I-93, project by project, piece by piece, until the dome would no longer be visible. Wording in the proposed amendment will allow the current height limitations to be exceeded, and I quote, "to the maximum extent necessary to accomplish the development program as approved by the planning board." I'll continue. "The design of buildings or structure would exceed the height limit shall respect the views of the State House dome to the extent feasible to accomplish the development goal. And buildings or structures that exceed the height limit shall provide a positive contribution to the architectural character of the downtown and to the visual image of the city skyline." Not one objective standard. There is nothing in the proposed amendment that will prevent the planning board from determining that all projects that come before them that will block the view of the State House dome are necessary to accomplish the development program, that to the extent feasible, they have the least impact, and that they provide positive contributions to the architectural character of the downtown. Before rushing ahead once again, time should be taken to fully understand the implications of limiting or removing the views of the State House dome. Why is it so important? Why is it necessary to erase an historic identifiable landmark from our city skyline? And let's be clear, this juke just won't be a fleeting blocking of the dome. This is only the first step in eliminating the view of the State House dome from the highway. Those who are promoting the redevelopment of the shopping plaza on Store Street are actively encouraging building heights that would obliterate the view of the State House dome. The 1997 downtown master plan at most would have allowed for a six-story building, protecting the view of the State House dome. It has been 37 years since the downtown master plan presented detailed plans for the redevelopment of the Phoenix Hall project. But in all this time, nothing has happened. Now at a time when construction costs and loan rates have skyrocketed, we are told if we don't immediately act to allow the State House dome to be obstructed, this project will not move forward. No project plans have been filed with the planning department. A cost analysis had not been made public to convince us that this is the only, that this is the only project that is financially viable for the builder. And according to mass report, it appears the developer will be asking for tax relief, a tax abatement.
That's again, that's, you're way down the road here. I gotta have you wrap it up here.
Over six years ago, the city set out on a path to update our zoning codes. The update has turned out to be an unmitigated failure. Now we are told that if we chip away at pieces of our current zoning code, again, before revising our master plan, somehow we will get it right this time. I'm not willing to take that chance, and I hope you won't either. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Herschlag. Going to just take a couple more here, and I gotta wrap this up. Come on. If you could sign in, Alan? Right at the bottom there. Thank you.
Yes, this is very quick.
Okay.
Very quick. My name's Jeff Kipperman, and as a business owner since over 35 years and a property owner, I own a building in Bicentennial Square, Sixth Bicentennial Square. I just want to offer my support for this project and also for the amendment. I was involved with Main Street Concord. I was a founding member and founding member of the 2020 Vision for Concord. And this goes, this amendment goes lockstep with both of those proposals and programs. And I just wanted to offer my support. I understand we're under time.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anybody else with a last few here? I got you. Best, one Jim in a row. Welcome back to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Jim Milliken, and I'm chairman of the Concord Historical Society. I'm going to be very brief.
Please, thank you.
The board is 100% in support of this project. Number two, I'm an 80-year member of the city of Concord. This is a fantastic project, and I've experienced every one of these things that have been mentioned tonight. And we must go forward with this, no questions asked.
It's pretty straightforward. Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, Jim?
I detected a little daylight.
A little daylight, a little bit of a side light there. Welcome to the table. It's a little different seeing you directly across the table, but welcome back if you could.
Mr. Chair, my name is Jim Bulleye, and the view from this side is pretty nice. I kind of like this.
Don't fall off the chair.
What's that?
Don't just, don't fall off the back.
No, for 26 years, I never worried about falling off the back, but here's my chance. The good thing about going toward the end is I get to cross off 90% of exactly what I was going to say because so many people said wonderful, positive things. I will just, big, couple of quick, very, very quick points. You heard about Capitol Commons? It's 91 feet, and the world did not stop spinning. Main Street was improved with Capitol Commons. Everything is wonderfully fine. It is a great addition to our downtown. And you saw what happened after that. Number two is, I think this proposed amendment provides flexibility. It gives the planning board the discretion, and therefore, the ability to help good projects happen and then keep the bad projects. We don't. So I think the important words are the flexibility and discretion, and that's what's important. And I'm going to actually sum it up by this, so I can move on. I realize tonight that it has been four months since I've had the opportunity to read a memo from our assistant city manager, Mr. Matt Walsh. And I realized how much I missed him. But as you move forward and you make your deliberations this evening, and you have to make the recommendation to the city council, I think that Mr. Walsh's memo is an excellent blueprint, blueprint for exactly how to move forward. And I strongly encourage you all to use that, to make your recommendations to the council. And Mr. Todd, it's great to see you. You were right there when we started Main Street. And isn't it great that you're going to be here while we keep doing here? Good to see you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Jim. One more here. Anybody else? Going to leave it at the mayor? We'll stop at the mayor? We're going to make you sign in, though. All right, so we're going to close the public hearing. Whoops, we have one more? Just to upstage the mayor, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Now I feel bad for keeping you here. Jamie Burnett, 17-year resident of Concord. I've been a tenant, actually, of Mark Zabrowski's on three different occasions. And I agree with everything. I support the proposal for all the reasons said, ensuring flexibility and discretion for this moving forward and all the technical, economic, and cultural reasons for the project. I just wanted to point out that in the time that I've known Mark, and hopefully you will agree with me, I've always found him to be, and I believe him to be, a very thoughtful and accommodating property owner and developer here in the city. And I lived here briefly 22, 23 years ago, before I moved here permanently. And I think we can all agree that downtown has come a long way since then. And I think that that's due to a lot of vision and contributions of people on this board and elsewhere. And I think Mark has made significant contributions. I think he cares about the city. And I would think he would do the right thing moving forward. So, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your testimony. Okay, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. I do want to, just again, this is a perfect example of municipal government working well. So I think there's a lot of information out in the public space over this particular topic. Hopefully you learned something tonight. Hopefully you either came in with an idea on what we were going to do or what we weren't going to do, and everybody heard all the testimony and was able to kind of gather from that. So from our perspective, Matt and Marie, we've got a council referral, which means that we can take a vote to recommend language that will be drafted up and sent to council. What's the process as far as this goes, since it's a zoning piece as well? I just want to make sure we're doing it correctly.
So you're, I appreciate that. I think exactly is what you said. So you have a proposal that's before you that's got some language in it. If you feel like that language is adequate, you can tell the city council that. If you feel like there's anything that you think should be added to that language, anything from the memo that I prepared, you should let us know that. And then provide us with, you know, that information, which we'll go back to the city council with. And depending if you're suggesting any amendments, the staff might take a stab at preparing those amendments when it goes back to the city council.
Okay. So you heard what Mr. Walsh said, so we've got the opportunity to use the memo that he prepared as a kind of a foundational piece. Do we have amendments? Do we have changes? Do we have ideas or concerns regarding what you heard tonight for testimony that may make you want to change your mind? This isn't a yay or nay, up or down vote. We'll ask for that in a minute. But I'm just looking for language changes that anybody may want to have. Counselor Todd?
Thank you. I think that the city staff report states at page five, "The impact to historic buildings is difficult to predict." Staff anticipates that this provision would likely be used for new construction. So I think that there's a recommendation in there to incorporate some language. And Mr. Walsh will be able to best speak to that specifically since he wrote the report. But I do think that it would be good to have some kind of safeguards right now. There are no safeguards in place for the, what we view as the historic buildings that are downtown. They're on the National Historic Register, but that doesn't protect them. So I think that if we want to try to, and it'll probably be easier for this board when it goes forward to make its future decisions on requests that come forward, it might be good to include something that touches on this in some fashion. And I'm not expert on this, so I don't know exactly what to recommend.
Through Heritage Commission, through recommendations from the Heritage Commission?
That would be a possibility, yeah, yeah. That, you know, that we, I mean, certainly if it's, if there's a request for a demolition of a property that's historic, that would need to go through Heritage.
Oh, that does anyways, yeah.
Regardless, we could, we could, maybe that we would, we would want to have the ability, if in case it doesn't, in case that a project is at a stage where it hasn't been before Heritage, that maybe we'd want to have a provision in there that says that we'd need it to go to Heritage first to get their opinion and, you know, report recommendations before we would then begin our review process on this board.
Okay. Is that logical? Yes, Henry.
Let me just clarify something there. When a historic building, and that's defined as being 50 years or more older, 50 years or? Yes, I said that correct, I think. They have to apply for a demolition review permit? And that goes to the demolition review committee, which is separate from the Heritage Commission? So if you're wanting something to go, items to go to the Heritage Commission before applying for a demolition permit, that would be, whoops, a separate action. And so I just wanted to make that clear, that the demolition permit goes to the demolition review committee, not the Heritage Commission? And Heritage Commission doesn't, right now, does not see anything prior to demolition?
Well, again, the demolition review committee is part of the Heritage Commission. So they, while they see it first, Heritage Commission still sees it as part of their, I think, monthly meeting. If I was on that commission, you'd think I'd remember, but, no?
Not really. They see it as an update.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I guess, yeah, if I can respond to that, I guess I was, what I was suggesting was that we may not, we may see a project that comes before this body that has not gone through the process of applying for demolition yet. So that's, that's the only instance where I'm thinking that we might want to have a referral from that body.
Okay. All right. Will I agree? Yep.
I would, I would agree, and I'd also say that, I mean, we do have some structures, I think, that are on the National Register downtown.
Yeah.
Correct. Yes, and I don't know what you can put in this to make sure that has had a really close look, prior, obviously, to demolition. And, but I think, I think you're right. I mean, I think it needs to go to Heritage, maybe it needs to go to Heritage before it goes to demolition.
It should. Yeah, I think that's what Counselor Todd is recommending, maybe put in some provisions to allow it. I mean, the, the designation from the historical piece doesn't add any protection to it, it just.
No, I know, I know.
Designates it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree that the language needs to be tightened up, and I'm a little, I'm a little, still unclear on the process. I don't want to sit in this venue and come up with language.
Yeah, yeah.
But is that something staff could do? And I'm, and I'm talking about, I received, like we all did, a letter from a constituent that talked about things like, to the extent possible, you know, the, meet the needs of the development, you know, who decides those things?
Yeah.
Sometimes vagueness works in our favor to allow us to do certain things. But what would be the process of getting that language?
So the staff can prepare, working with the, the document that was submitted to you by Attorney Pollock, we can take that document, we can modify it, we can make red line changes to it. We can bring that language.
Okay.
You know, if the board, you know, so there's two ways to do this. The board could provide direction to the staff and say, hey, can you make sure this, that, and the other thing are addressed, and whatever might go to the city council. The board could say, can you make sure those things are addressed, and we want to see it one more time before it goes to the city council? So it's, it's really up to you. There is some language about relative to historic buildings, picking up on what Counselor Todd said on page five to six of my report, that kind of drew some parallels with some provisions that are in RSA seventy-nine E, which I had a hand in writing many years ago, actually, with the state. The only thing that I would caution you about is, I just want to make sure that we're, we're careful about how those words are written. There are some people in the community that might think, for example, the EEP Hotel is historic and should not be torn down. The Heritage Commission felt that under the test in seventy-nine E, that building can be torn down, and it doesn't have an adverse effect on historic resources of the community. So, you know, if you're going to try to have language about that type of an issue, you know, you can provide some direction to staff, or we can take a stab at it and bring it back to you and see if we've got it the way you want it before it goes to the city council. If it's something that's more straightforward, like, hey, make sure there's an adequate water pressure to serve the space above eighty feet, I don't know if you need to see that again, that's pretty straightforward. But if there's something substantive, or that we think is going to require some debate, we can bring language back to you to review.
And if.
Yep, please.
And because there are, there are no development plans right now, we, we have the time to do this. I mean, quite honestly, I'd rather not see this again, and just give it to the council to work on it, because I know they're going to anyhow. So, that would be one option.
Spoken like a former city council.
Yes. We never liked, never liked anything that came from committees. So I would be open to, to anything. I mean, I, I think it needs to be tightened up.
Yeah, so.
Some more definitions.
Let me just, again, I think, you know, you guys are the professionals, and I think there's a certain point where we're just going to muck up the works from our perspective. I will point to a letter we received dated April fourteenth from Elizabeth Durfee-Hengen, who's a historic consultant preservationist. She does speak in favor of this, but she specifically calls out some areas, the phrase "to accomplish the development program," which I think someone mentioned, "to the extent feasible," and references some guideline, references to the 2018 design. Maybe with that type of feedback, that specific type of feedback, and staff's hand at crafting it, if there's a, we get motion to, to recommend that we move it forward, I think the, the feedback is that we'd like you to take a stab at tightening things up, but we don't need to be another cog in the wheel to, to hold it up on our end. If that's, if I'm, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think that's, that's my recommendation, and if anybody has another one, feel free. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. The, the only one that I saw that maybe needs a little tweak is you talk about renderings and simulations. That can be very broad. Where do you want it from? Well, it's from this corner, it's from that corner, it's from ninety-three. That's where I think maybe we tighten it up so that the proponents have a very clear cut, this is what they want. They want the view from here to here, looking back toward the State House through this building, and does that pose an issue?
Yeah.
Now, that's one area, that's the only area I really saw, other than letting staff. I agree 100%. There's a lot of stuff in here. I think the staff knows us enough now to know a lot of our, you know, issues. And I think, Matt, you've done a great job putting this all together.
So I'd like to move it forward with a recommendation. Teresa?
No, I was going to say, looking at your memo, Matt, on page eight, I thought some of that was really quite good. And it seems to me, we, if we don't want it to apply to Pennacott, we ought to say so.
Yeah. That type of tightening up.
Yeah, that tightening up, I think is really important. What I did not understand, if I read it correctly, is this, one of the recommendations was it only apply on the east side, not the west side of Main Street?
So.
Explain that to, I could.
Certainly, so.
Yeah, I couldn't figure that one out.
Remembering, Main Street's built into the side of a hill. And so, so State Street is, is, in some places, higher than Main Street, and Main Street is higher than Store Street.
Right.
And so, and the issue that, I don't want to talk about specifically about Phoenix Hall, but Phoenix Hall's a victim of that topography, because it, it's on the downhill slope of, of the hill. If you take the new building at thirty-two South Main Street, the Employment Security Building, that building is about, it's six stories off of Main Street. The topography there, because of average grade, you would actually pick up additional height going up the hill. And, and recognizing that, and then recognizing the character of the neighborhood that is to the west of, of State Street, where it's nineteenth-century, early twentieth-century construction, it's, it's two, two and a half stories. So just, just recognizing that there could be unintended consequences relative to the height. So what I was trying to get to is, does the board, you know, the proposal from Attorney Pollock is the entire CBP district. Do you want to be more surgical about it, or do you just, or are you okay with just the entire CB, or just the whole CBP?
I would certainly want to be more surgical.
Okay.
Yeah, because it seemed to me when I read this, that if I understood it basically, it was as much as possible protecting the view. So when I look at the Phoenix Hall project, if I hear it, it's kind of a minimal.
Quick second.
A minimal, quick second. Whereas if you, if you have it everywhere, you're going to take the, I mean, the whole view's going to be gone eventually. So I would certainly, I thought all of those recommendations on page eight were good.
Okay. Any other discussion? So I'd like to make a motion to advance this with a positive recommendation from the planning board, with staff input on language to revise.
Address the issues we spoke about tonight.
Revise the, the existing ordinance as we spoke to and heard the testimony tonight.
To add the CUP.
To add CP, yeah.
May I just ask one clarification?
Yeah.
If we, if we, no.
Now discussion.
Now discussion.
If we approve this, this does not mean that the Phoenix Hall project is approved. So when they come back. There's nothing to do with it.
No, I know, I'm just clarifying for the record, for the record. So this means that when Mr. Zabrowski comes back, we may say, hm, could you revise this? Could you do that? I mean, it means that, that this is giving him an option, but if nothing's been approved yet.
You're correct.
This gives him a path forward, but nothing. It's got to come to the planning board for approval.
You're entirely correct. There's no application before you tonight. There's no mechanism for an application before you, and whatever the, the city council approves, any project in, in the, that's affected by it, we have to comply with it. So yes, yeah.
The only other thing I want to say, if there are other projects downtown, that right now, as I understand it, nothing on this side of the street would, would apply, but anything on the other side, somebody else could come in.
Absolutely.
And we just look at it the same way.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, if I could, I just want to make sure, on your motion, so what you're saying is you want to recommend moving forward with the initial language from Mr. Pollock, and the memo pages seven and eight provided by Mr. Walsh, just for clarification.
And, and additional, additional information provided by the, was this?
Liz Hengen, and, and the tightening up of the language.
And the discussion with that. I just want to clarify, because it wasn't clear to me.
I don't know if it's just.
You actually said Matt's memo.
Just seven and eight.
Pages seven and eight, which are those.
Is that right, Matt?
So seven and eight had some recommendations, I believe, is, Hengen's memo talks about historic preservation, so to the extent that you want me to put any language, staff to work on any language about how this may apply to historic preservation, just make sure you're clear about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
David?
Well, we have an opportunity at that point, then, to review your proposed language?
No. I think we recommend going right to city council.
We'll let the council, we'll let the council do that.
Kicking the can. All right, any other discussion? So we got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You have his vote? So now you guys, since you stayed for the vote, everybody's going to stay for the rest of the meeting. We got two, we got two-thirds of the meeting left to go, so you got to stay. Thank you very much, everybody, for your testimony. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on in our agenda, if we could.
Yeah, why don't you give me any advice?
I really wanted to hear what the public was going to say. I had things in my mind. Jim and I spoke earlier.
You know, what's amazing is that there are, there are two groups of the public. Obviously, there's one group that looked at this issue.
They thought it was a zoning just to allow that project, and I think people panicked.
I want to encourage people.
They didn't understand it was a way for us to have a little more control and really review it.
No, I know that, but I, I mean, I think that the concern still was there, that, you know, potentially, as you heard, further, further, further.
And, and I still, as a lifelong resident, I still have a little bit of that angst about, you know, because I look, if you look at the street.
Hey, folks, if you'll take the discussion outside, please.
Right to the right, you got the old, the spurious, one story, you think, you know what's the next.
All the way outside, keep going.
This side, this side. I mean, anybody who thinks differently.
Yeah, it is, right, right. We don't really know.
I do have one working hand.
Well, the, well, the developers, you look at all the, most of the letters were developer, 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 going, do it! Yes, we want to be.
It's roastingly hot up here.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, like, brutally hot.
What time of year you start turning the AC on in here?
I have this.
No, I know.
Bet you thought everybody was here to talk to you.
I'm painfully aware that it's warm, too, yes.
I'm glad you're sitting here with us, sweating.
Now you, you feel our pain. It gets from ten, ten-thirty, and we're like melting, and we still got a full.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. See, you guys thought everybody was here to talk to you guys, didn't you, Father Rich? You thought everybody was here to see you tonight.
I hope. We're all going to, you're going to confess.
Okay, let's, let's move on in our agenda. Thank you very much, everybody, for your, your patience. We'll try to move right along. Let's get into item ten A. If we could read that into the record.
Christ the King Parish requests major site plan approval for the construction of a new fifty-three-hundred-square-foot building and related site improvements for the purpose of a food pantry at sixty South Main Street in the urban transitional district. This item was postponed from March twentieth, twenty-twenty-four at the request of the applicant.
Okay, welcome back to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
I'm Morgan Dunson, civil engineer from Nobis Group.
Jonathan Polly with Warren Street Architects.
Father Richard Oberg, pastor of Christ the King Parish.
Great, welcome back, guys, and I, I understand some changes have happened. If you can just give us an update on the, on the project, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, so two months we were sent away to have some conversations with the school and a few neighbors. We had multiple meetings with all of those constituents, if you will. Out of those discussions, I'm just going to, I'm going to try not to blind you. So I'm going to just talk through some of the issues that, that we did resolve. One of the issues was on safety from, just to reorient you, this is the pantry on the lower south end of the site. This is St. John's School, the community center, and the church is down here. This is Main Street, out here. So one of the issues that came up was safety of the kids going from the elementary school to the middle school. And what we've decided to do is to make this road that enters in off of State Street one-way, one-way, all the way through to this point. So you can come and go two-way here, you can come two-way at this point, enter into the existing parking lot. You come around this, drive through this parking lot, but you're one-way back out. So we don't have two-way traffic. So this lane got smaller, and we're going to stripe that, that pavement, if you will, with a crosswalk leading from the elementary to the middle school. There were some other issues that came up in, in conversations that required favors, like, we can't have a striped basketball court in a parking lot. Can't have a parking lot, but not a striped, so we took that all out. The, the actual delineation of a parking lot is going to be just the parking lot and nothing else. We did have multiple conversations with planning staff. Originally, we wanted to see the, the playground that was associated with, to the west of the existing pantry, moved to this corner. But we just couldn't make that work with the, with the definition of the playground being a structure and being in the setback. So that playground now has been moved to this red area here. There'll be a fence, there's a, there's a drip line from the roof that we want to make sure that nothing happens there, but this will be a fenced playground for the little kids. Oh, let's see, I'm trying to think of the other, there's a, Gaga Pet, for you, it's a, it's kind of a Roman thing where you throw the kids in, two go in, one come out. It's.
Back to the old days, huh?
Yeah, it's like a, a pool. I don't know, some kind of ballgame. I'm not quite sure what it is, but that's going to occur right there. We did, in, in the previous negotiations here with some of the neighbors across the street, we moved a light pole here, we put a couple of wall packs along the building edge. We just wanted to light this pathway, this, this walkway. There's a couple of other side agreements that don't relate necessarily to this site plan. There's a, there's a light on the community building over here that's sort of a wall pack that's outside the scope of this project, and we're just going to take the wall pack and make it a, a can fixture under the canopy, so you don't see that like a, like a headlight on a, on a car. We did relocate the telephone pole in this corner over here to this across the drive. That's all of the utilities that come into the community center, just to, just for people feel more comfortable that there's just a pole and there's not enough turning radius. That does free up a little bit, now that the overhead line is not going in this direction, but it's coming across here, that we put a little more landscape. We removed that little sidewalk that made the connector to the side. I don't know, Father, did I forget anything?
I don't think so.
So I think that, you know, as best we could, we, we met with parents with the school, and we met with some neighbors. We talked and listened to their concerns. I think these are the issues that I, that I had thought we could resolve at the last planning board meeting, if given the opportunity to, to go back and, and do it. But I think it's, it's all resolved, and it's all on paper now. I know there's a lot of people here tonight that want to speak for, I'm hoping there's nobody here to speak against, but we'll see. We'll take any questions that you have.
Yeah, questions from the board? Jeff?
So I see you have this really, 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 really long crosswalk, and I don't really see a way that it prevents a car from driving on it, any portion of it. Is there any consideration to expanding those islands to actually create, you know, where you have the island at the end of the parking aisles, specifically here?
Yep.
And here, could we actually create the cross, an actual sidewalk there with ramps, so that there are little refuges, 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 I can't even say that word tonight, for the students?
Refuge.
I also noticed that your crosswalk on this end does not actually connect to your ADA ramp. It goes out in the middle of nowhere.
No, it, it, it actually does connect right here to the sidewalk, but it continues all the way around, because the kids come out of the playground here, and they're not going to be so coordinated as to take a right or take a left, take a. take a right or take a left, take a right, take a left to get onto the crosswalk. They're gonna come out of that gate, and they're gonna walk straight.
Those are little kids. The, the crosswalk is gonna be for junior high kids. So the little kids are not gonna be going that.
No, I understand, but traditionally, when we do a crosswalk and you have an ADA ramp, the crosswalk ties into the ADA ramp, not to the side of it.
It's right there.
I understand, but your ramp is coming straight out next to the sidewalk. They're parallel to each other, not tied into.
Okay.
Ms.?
Yes.
That was gonna be one of the staff comments I wanted the board is to look at precedent condition number seven and decide if they want to add that, which speaks exactly to, to those points. Not only to provide the pedestrian refugee islands, but also to ex, um, widen those landscape islands out to discourage traffic from turning right and kind of forcing them, because it's still a nineteen-foot wide one-way lane. So by pumping those out, we discourage that flow of traffic as well. That we wanted the board to discuss if they wanted that to be a condition of this approval.
So, uh, the existing, where the existing islands are, just bumping them out over the, over the crosswalk? Is that what we're talking about?
Yep, up to, not necessarily, but not to, you know, impede the minimum, the minimum required length with, which I believe is the fourteen feet. But there's, there's some space there to bump those out and to force people away from the one-way drive and for some separation.
You could add curbing.
Yeah.
You know, if you have to get that curbing, that'd be even better, I think.
That's what I'm saying. Actually creating a sidewalk panel with, you basically have a ramp up and down at each end of the parking. And it just, like you say, and I was fine with the fourteen feet because they've already requested a waiver for fourteen, you know, that we were okay with on the lower section. I just think it, it creates those little pocket areas for the students.
Would you tip down?
Yes.
Off of those and, and go across and tip back up and come across?
Yep.
Okay. Doesn't present any problems for plowing or anything, so you're all set, you're all set. Okay. Any other questions, Jeff?
No, I am good. Thank you.
Okay. Remember the board? Okay, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Well, have you guys stepped back if there's comments going up?
Thank you, and thank you for talking to your neighbors.
Thank you for the work. But you know you guys want to talk. Come on up. Couldn't get you to come up for the swing change. You gotta come up and talk for this one. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record.
Anne Marie Timmons.
And Will Delker. Um, we're neighbors directly across the street from this project at sixty-two South State Street. And we, um, reached out to the folks at the church to talk about some of our concerns, which involved some of the lighting in the original plan, but also landscaping, as, uh, I'm sure you're all aware, the, um, site plan regulations require projects like this that, you know, are non-residential use in a residential or mixed neighborhood like ours to have appropriate screening to block the effects. And there is the food pantry there right now, and we don't really, um, have, we hardly notice it's there, but it's considerably back on the lot from where this, um, building is gonna be. And this building will be, I think we calculated less than sixty feet from our front door, uh, now. And right now, it's, I mean, the existing food pantry is, is a hundred yards or more back, uh, away from our house. And so we, we seen almost no impact from the existing pantry. But now, with the activity moving into our front yard, uh, we were particularly concerned about issues with respect to screening the activity, um, you know, from the neighbors, from our neighbors, and we, um, also spoke with our, our neighbors next door at sixty South, South State Street, uh, the Cannellis, who also signed on to a letter that we submitted.
We did receive the letter, and it is part of the, part of the public record.
And, um, so the church agreed, uh, to make some changes, which I think are before you now with the revised lighting plan, to change some of the, um, lights, um, and put those on the building, and, and that addresses our concerns. I think we continue going forward. Um, they also represented that they would continue to work with us and submit a technical, um, revision to deal with the landscaping issues. So, uh, when we met with them, we, um, said, you know, this is our concern. Worried about the buffering and the screening of this because it's becoming so close to our house, and the activity is now, you know, so much closer to, to our front yard. And so they basically said, well, what do you suggest? Um, you know, and I said, I don't know. I'm not a landscape, scape architect. And so we, uh, hired our, our own landscape architect firm, Pelletieri Associates, who had some suggestions, which, um, and we talked through with, uh, the folks at the church and, and Mr. Holly and Father Rich. You know, and, and we discussed how I think there's some concerns because the utilities run right of, right underneath the ground in front of the new building. And so there was some limitation to what you could plant in that area. But, um, Pelletieri suggested there are ways to deal with that without interfering and/or causing problems with the, um, existing underground utilities. And for example, one idea they had was to have raised, you know, very large raised beds where you could have significant plantings that would give you, give us that kind of screening, but wouldn't be movable so that, you know, if any access to those underground utilities was needed, you wouldn't have the roots and structures that might interfere with that. And, um, so, uh, the church agreed to, um, moving forward in the project to make, uh, propose a technical change to address those kind of concerns, and that's very important to us, and I know it's important, uh, to the Cannellis as well. They couldn't be here tonight. They've got a young child, but, um, you know, th- those are the discussions we've had and concerns we've had along the way. And we want to just make sure that that's, um, part of the project going forward and that those concerns are addressed.
Okay, and just for the record, the, the landscape, uh, the landscaping you're talking about is on their property, not your property?
Correct, on their property, yes. So it's, um, right at the front. So if you're looking at the front of the building, there's like a white space right there.
Yeah.
That space, I think, is, is currently where the, um, the utilities are. And right now, there's some very relatively small shrubs proposed in the landscape plan. And so what, you know, what Pelletieri had recommended is there's, you know, options to put sort of more substantial planters there to build, put in more, um, substantial vegetation that wouldn't under, wouldn't interfere with the underground utilities.
Okay.
Um, and then the other thing is, it's not on this plan, but it is on the, uh, landscape plan that is also, I think, really important. And, and I think actually will, will improve the overall feature. It's a lot of the trees that they're proposing, but particularly the one in the island that is sort of just to the north or, yeah, I guess that's, um, the north on this, um, map, uh, that little triangular island right there. There, on the landscape plan, there's a tree right here, which also, I think, um, would provide considerable shielding of the lighting that will continue to exist on the property, because, um, those lights are on twenty-four, seven, so, and, you know, our, our bedroom and other living areas right there now, just feet away from that structure.
Okay.
And I, I wanted to add, I, I appreciate the board really insisting that communication improve. I'm in the communication business, so I probably have a too high of a standard, but we had to reach out to the church. We didn't get a copy of the revised plan. We weren't invited to the parent meeting. I just went in covertly. I just hope the communication becomes authentic both ways. So it, if, it's really would be helpful if you can convey the importance of that. Because I think the conversations have been good, but we had to initiate them.
Okay.
So thank you for making that a priority.
Sure. So for the record, you, the, the recommendations that you guys saw, you guys have had created, have been presented and are part of the plan or not part of the plan?
Some are and some aren't. So the, the, um, issues with respect to the planters are not part of the current landscaping plan. The lighting changes are part of the plan and reflected on the, on the revised, um, plan that, um, was submitted after our meeting with them.
Okay.
And I think that's why communication needs to continue, because tonight you're not approving that, so it's, you know, we've agreed verbally, but there's no commitment, um, written down.
Okay, yeah, and so the discussion we had is, um, I guess is a process where they can go back to the, um, planning department and propose a technical revision, and so long as the, uh, planning department's okay with it not interfering with the underground utilities, that could go forward, and we just want to make sure that is part of, part of the happens going forward.
Got it. Great. Any questions? Yes.
Just a clarification then, thank you. If, uh, those conversations continue, would, is it safe to say then that you're in favor of the project moving forward at this time?
That's a difficult question. I, I'll tell you why I hedge on that. So as I said, the current food pantry has, is absolutely a great neighbor. It's been there for fifty years. I, the other night, I said, you know, I don't even realize it's there. And if that continues, this is gonna be a fine and great project, and it certainly, uh, is needed. I, I appreciate Father Rich taking the time to show us, uh, how the existing structure is, is completely not useful for what they need to accomplish. The reason I hesitate is, um, build it and they will come.
Yeah.
And we haven't gotten a clear, uh, indication about how many more people this is gonna serve and how much of an impact that's gonna have on our front yard, basically. Because the way this project is structured, you know, people, uh, are supposed to be parking in those parking spots just to the north of the building, but there's a, only a small entryway. And, I mean, frankly, I think a lot of people are gonna end up parking on the street in front of our house. It's gonna be a lot more visible than the current food pantry, which I think may attract more customers, which may or may not be a good thing, but it'll definitely have a greater impact on us, the neighbors directly across the street. And, you know, I, I understand they can't predict what impact that's gonna be, but, uh, that's what causes me some serious concerns about that going forward.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Can you sign in?
Uh, yeah, just, you did sign in, yeah. Anybody else like to give some testimony regarding this application? Last chance? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I think before us in our staff packets, we've got, uh, again, picking up from last month, this is, uh, this is in your packets, uh, four point one, we'll start with the discussion, uh, the discussion of the findings of fact, which has been the testimony that we received of the applicant submissions, the, uh, the content that we've got in our packet, uh, is, we'll use that as our finding of fact. Four point three is to grant architectural design review approval as submitted. Would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design review as submitted? I did recognize that there were some ADR. It was previously ADR committee recommended approval submitted with the stipulation that if proposed lighting plan changes, that such changes be submitted for review and approved before the planning board and the understanding that there are solar panels on the southern elevation. We all set with that as far as? Nothing needs to change for that, right? Okay, so again, uh, would someone like to make a motion, make a motion to grant architectural design review approval as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Four point four is to grant approvals for requested waivers from the site plan regulations. Again, using, uh, the criteria outlined in six seventy-four forty-four, three E two as guidance. We've got, uh, section eighteen, ten to allow twelve-foot wide access driveway for approximately seventy feet. And section twenty-five oh two-one to not, uh, to not underground the existing overhead utilities, which are being relocated instead of allowing it to remain overhead. Would someone like to make a motion to grant approvals for requested waivers from the site plan regulation as outlined?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If they're going to change and add those sidewalks in that we should call out in the precedent, the seventy-foot, fourteen-foot wide no longer applies here, that would change in length, correct?
I think it's the wood, uh, access draft coming off of South State.
Right, so you're not referring to the fourteen that now has to go all the way around just to that piece coming in?
Yeah.
The second with the, I just want to clarify, with the change in the location of the utility pole, are the, because there was discussion when we suggested moving the utility pole, then underground them from that pole back to the building. Is that happening, or are they just going overhead from the new pole back to the building?
Overhead.
Because the, the discussion kind of was, the whole point of moving the pole was.
Yeah, I don't know if we got that far down the road on that discussion.
Okay.
I think we determined to leave them overhead as they, as they stood, if I remember right. I don't know if anybody else. Okay, uh, so again, four point four, would someone like to make a motion to grant approval for the requested waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four point five is to grant major site plan approval for the proposed construction of a new fifty-three-hundred-square-foot food, uh, pantry building and additional site improvements at sixty seventy-two South State Street, uh, including the proposed plan revision, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. And those are outlined in precedent conditions, uh, one through seven, subsequent conditions, one through four. Should there be any conditional changes regarding, uh, landscape, uh, that's been proposed by an abutter? I don't know if that's appropriate in this scenario or, uh, language to say, work with the abutters to, regarding landscaping that's been proposed.
If the board wants to require it, I drafted a language that you could consider, that the applicant shall provide non-required landscaping on the South State Street front of the building with species and installation methods to be, uh, to take into consideration of the, uh, not to conflict with other utilities.
Good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so recognize that as precedent or subsequent condition?
Precedent condition.
Eight?
If you wanted to see it on the plan.
I do want to see it on the plan.
Then that would be precedent.
Good from the board? Okay, so again, uh, four point five is to grant major site plan approval with precedent conditions one through seven, with the addition of eight, uh, subsequent conditions, one through four. Do we have a motion to grant that major site plan approval as outlined?
Second.
Motion has been made by Dina. Seconded by, uh, by Matt. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set? Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for standing through. Good luck with the project. It looks like a good project. Okay, let's move on. Item, uh, ten B in our agenda. Right?
Yes. Erin Lambert and Wilcox and Barton, Inc., on behalf of First Church Holdings, LLC, request approval of a minor subdivision lot line adjustment and an amendment to a major site plan approval to reconfigure the parking lots to the north and west. Also requested our waivers from various sections of the site plan regulations and subdivision regulations. The site is addressed as one seven seven North Main Street in the urban commercial district and downtown residential district. And this item was postponed from the March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, uh, meeting at the request of the applicant.
I thought we were all done with this project. I'm gonna guess that you thought the same thing. Didn't think we'd ever see you again for the first church project, but. Okay. Go ahead.
John Chorlius.
Got something for us?
PowerPoint that Matt's loading. These are hard copies of that PowerPoint.
Erin, can you state your name for the record?
Uh, we're doing all rights.
Uh, hang on, hang tight. We'll let him sit down.
Here, we'll share.
Share. Okay. It's fine.
Yeah, we're sharing. We're fine.
You're good.
We're good.
Give it over here.
Take, take this one, because I can.
Staff need it now, miss?
You're good. All right. Erin, welcome. If you could state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Erin Lambert with Wilcox and Barton.
And I'm John Chorlius with First Church Redevelopment.
First Church Redevelopment, all right. Well, welcome back. Tell us what you're here for tonight. I think it was a lot line, right?
Two quick things, so, uh, I'll give you a long night. We're here for an amended site plan, major site plan, and a lot line adjustment, which really are companion cases. There's our site. You saw it last September. Our neighbor, which we're, with whom we share many feet of friendship is the Islamic Society. As, is, uh, this is a site plan that you saw last, in approved last September. It shows, uh, at this point, forty-nine parking spaces, including these seven, which you then granted us a CUP to remove. It took us a while, but with a lot of sort of patience and continued conversations, we were able to find a, uh, a good solution with the, the Islamic Center where we agreed to, we could figure out a good win-win resolution. As you're probably aware, the zoning variances that we were granted were challenged. You know, zoning board was, the suit was brought against the zoning board. This. This, we discussed, resolved all that stuff. And the resolution basically involves, the changes that are before you now. We would do, we are asking you for a lot line adjustment, which would transfer this, allow us to transfer this blue area to the Islamic Society. That's the lot line adjustment piece. The site plan amendment piece is basically authorizing the construction by the Islamic Society of that parking lot. In order to come before you, we had to go back to the zoning board, which we did. Those CUP spaces now would be on the lot line adjustment area, so we wouldn't be able to build those seven spaces in the future. So we went back to the zoning board, got a further parking variance that allowed us to eliminate those seven spaces. And based on that, we could proceed back with you. So that's what we're looking to do. There are, that is the significant amendment to the plan. There are some very minor other items that I'll point out quickly. We moved a stair over 10 feet. And there were some patios that you saw here last September. They're gone. Everything else is the same. This is sort of a line depicting the lot line adjustment area. Our concern in those discussions was trying to balance, help the Islamic Society with their parking needs, but preserving as much of this large lawn area as possible, which we think is important to our project and I think just benefits everybody. I think we accomplished that.
So did I hear you say, John, all legal issues are resolved?
There is an agreement in place under which, that will lead to that.
Okay.
There you go. I want to thank planning and engineering staffs. We were originally on the agenda last month. We decided to continue to this month to really work through with planning and engineering all the comments. My personal view is these approvals with a lot of conditions are, leave you in sort of a no man's land. And I'd much rather work through it and really have only standard conditions on approval. And if there's, you know, something that we just can't agree on, that's what you guys are for. I'm happy to say that this is the cleanest, you know, recommendation letter you're ever going to see, and it's a result of a lot of hard work on everybody's part, so I appreciate that. One little technical point is ADR-wise. Last September, you required us to go back to ADR for a couple of items, and really it was voluntary. ADR said you can do better on a couple of these points. We said, yeah, we know we can. We decided to go back. We agreed to go back. That was a condition. We went back. The two items really were, you can do, you know, these five windows in the sort of chapel section of the building, we can do better than our earlier presentation. That's what we came back with. They liked it. You can do better with your presentation of the new doors and deck in the front. We came back with sort of an earlier version of this, and this plan basically shows the deck and door system that we showed the ADR, but adding some elements that they suggested. This planter at the base of the deck and then lowering the deck and then using a narrower horizontal cladding. Staff's report says that by going back to ADR, we have satisfied the requirement of your approval back in September. We do not have to go back to ADR. I will tell you, I will, and that's, and we would like to request approval tonight without any requirement to go back to ADR. I think we have satisfied the condition. But I will tell you, we will go back to ADR on a voluntary, you know, advisory basis. I mean, I personally feel that ADR, you know, frequently enhances our, you know, projects with suggestions. Sometimes the suggestions cannot be done because of lead times of products and things like that, but you know, it's a balancing act, but we have, I think this and other projects that I've been involved with have benefited from ADR's involvement, so.
So tell me, is there, is there an aesthetic reason other than balance left to right on the two stairs that's going up on that front, where the patio is on the front stairs? You've got a stair on the right, stair on the left, two doors on, two doors. Would it, would it be better to, I don't want to change it, but I'm just asking if there's a, if there's a reason why you've got two staircases and wouldn't just at one end have a bigger patio? Or have the patio all the way to one end?
Well, I think the symmetry is important. Originally, we had two small patio. It was sort of a U-shaped patio. It was a single stair going up. And that, this really is a primary outdoor communal patio space, so I think having it larger is important. And really, the reason is we played around with these walls, these masonry walls up the sides. We felt that the earlier deck that we proposed that would sort of sit right against the edges of those walls, it just didn't look right. And I think letting them breathe and having, there's two doors, you know, two symmetrical stairs.
Yeah, that's fine. I just was wondering. Teresa?
John, is this the correct, is what I have here, is this the correct height of the patio? Or was this?
This is, this is the corrected height.
Okay. So this, what we're seeing right here is correct?
Correct.
Okay. I wasn't sure when you said...
And the height really is dictated by the desire to have no steps from the...
From the inside.
Away in lobby. So it's barrier free. So, I mean, we could lower it by a couple of feet and have a couple of steps, but it would, it would not achieve that objective.
Yep. Okay. Other questions? Jeff?
So this kind of goes back to one of my September comments. I understand that there's some agreement also within the easement to allow the corner piece of property now access this.
There is, yeah, so I think what Jeff's referring to is...
I forget what the address is. Is it 185 North State Street?
Yes, 185.
So, yeah. This property here has a small parking lot in the back. The only access to that parking lot is through this driveway. There is no written document that grants that right.
Existing.
But as a practical matter, it has, it has certainly been the condition for, you know, some amount of time. I mean, we have no intent to rock that boat. One of the improvements as a result of this plan is that this is currently a two-way driveway. You know, very non-conforming in terms of within another series of considerations. Not, and it was part of the reason we, staff had suggested back in September about signalizing the intersection, which we resisted and you agreed with us. Under this plan, this is dramatically improved in that this becomes a one-way driveway, plus the angled spaces. It'll be owned by the Islamic Society. This will be their main entrance point. They have, also have an entrance point off of Pearl Street. So this would be the traffic pattern. In, when this becomes one-way, unless we're going to let these folks continue to be the only folks that can use it as a two-way driveway, there will be a need for, to create a right to continue through and follow this one-way pattern, not only across what was formerly our property, but across the Islamic Society's property. And that is, that one of the conditions to the approval in the staff report is that such an easement satisfactory to staff and city solicitor be...
So it's three parties? Three parties?
It'll only be two afterwards.
Two.
I mean, so let me back up half a second. This approval gives the Islamic Society, these approvals give us the ability to sell that piece of land.
Yeah.
And they give the Islamic Society the ability to construct that parking lot. They may well do that. They also may not. I mean, they have other needs and plans and, but a condition of this construction, and that is expressed in the staff report, is that, you know, this driveway then would become a one-way driveway. And if that were to happen, such an easement needs to be...
All right.
That is, it's subsequent or precedent condition 8.7A2.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it was tough to see on the plat any reference to it, so I just wanted to kind of make sure that I understood that it was not only for their access on that piece of property, but all the way through the Islamic, so it didn't pen them in. So I'm glad to see that you were able to work that out. Thank you.
All right. Other questions from the board? No? Yeah, Dina?
And the parking for the building on the corner of Pearl and Main Street, those people would still have parking for that building on that corner?
Their parking lot is on their own property. It's just access to, you have to drive across this property to get to that parking lot. And they do it now in a two-way fashion, and it will become a one-way pattern if this parking gets constructed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Remember, the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? I guess not. Any other updates from staff?
No.
No?
Mr. Chorley covered it.
Okay.
One item before we do...
Whatever we do.
Yes. Findings of fact, et cetera.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion to determine the application complete?
Sure. Okay. So we'll close the public hearing, because we already, we already opened the public hearing. We'll look for, was that on my list?
It is.
Let me be honest.
It's on my list.
Exactly. It's not on the list. I didn't think it was on the list. So there is a determination completeness component for this, so would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete? We've already opened the public hearing, so I'm not going to mention that. Not a development of regional impact.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so that covers that piece of it. Yeah, no problem. And then in your staff report for this application, again, using the information we've seen tonight and the previous application as our findings of fact, the data that we heard from the testimony, my goodness, where is my recommendations? Holy cow. So all the way down eight, is that right?
Yep.
So in eight, wow, this is different. Hold on. So what am I looking at here? Using the criteria?
Yeah.
674443, grant the waiver requesting section 11.
8.2 through 8.8.
Yeah, so 8.2 through 8.8. Can we take those all in one to grant all those waivers?
If you'd like.
I would like to do that. So would someone like to make a motion to grant the waivers as outlined in your packet from 8.2 to 8.8?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 8.6 is to grant approval for the amendment of the request, request of a major site plan approval as outlined in table 1 of the staff report, and that encompasses precedent conditions 1 through 8, subsequent conditions 1 through 10. Would someone like to make a motion to grant approval of the amendment request as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 8.7 is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment between 177 North Main Street and 181 North Main Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through 7 and subsequent condition 1. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a roundly seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set with that one? And we'll welcome you back up, Erin, for 10C, if we could read that into the record.
Erin Lambert and Wilcox and Barton, Inc., on behalf of Fred and Murty Potter, 125 N S S LLC, 20 Franklin Street Concord LLC, and 20 Bradley Street LLC, request approval for a minor subdivision, minor lot line adjustment application. Site is addressed as 20 Franklin Street, 22 Franklin Street, 10 Bradley Street, and 125 North State Street in the neighborhood residential district.
All right. Could we get a staff update on this? Because there's a lot to this.
Sorry. 10C?
10D.
What's the matter?
Yeah. 10C was postponed.
Postponed.
Sorry about that.
I knew that. That's why I skipped.
So we're on 10D.
I don't, um, okay. When you mentioned it earlier, I heard 4A, 4B, and 9B. I never heard the 10 we were talking about.
Yeah, it was up in the front. It was up on the first.
Yep, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
This application, well, first, they submitted it as a lot line adjustment and a major site plan. Previous major site plan approval expired. They postponed the site plan approval portion to next month, but opted to continue with the lot line adjustment portion. So all this being considered right now is, tonight, is the lot line adjustment application to adjust the lot lines of three parcels into the 125 North State Street parcel. And the purpose of that is to create an area for a solar array panel in the far corner. There is a, an existing landscape easement on the property, and the applicant is aware of that landscape easement, and the solar array panel will not be on the landscape Staff has reviewed it. It meets all the requirements of zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. There was a letter that was received questioning some of the items of completeness. There are conditions of approval addressing one of the items specifically. One of those items was that the use is not stated on the plat, and staff has noted that, and that is a condition of approval, because that letter is correct. The use is not stated on the plat. The use that is proposed on the adjusted portion is not a use, or is a use that is allowed in the district, meaning that item four of the letter that was received by, Chris, I cannot remember his last name.
Bolt.
In staff's estimation, that is not applicable, because the non-conforming use is on the front part of the parcel, the larger part, which is the office, and that is not allowed in the RN district. They have zoning board of adjustment variance approval for that. The solar array panel is, in staff's estimation, is allowed in the RN district. So the argument made by Mr. Bolt, in staff's estimation, is not valid for number four and number one, and number two, reference purposes and objectives, but the actual regulations and the articles of the zoning ordinance are being met, meaning there are no specific requirements or regulations for writing a lot line, or there's no requirement prohibiting an odd shape. So...
Okay. So just trying to condense it down here. So staff has reviewed this letter that we received, and, and we are in, are we okay to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. That's all, that's where I wanted to get to. Okay. So, welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record?
Good evening. I'm Erin Lambert with Wilcox and Barton.
Fred Potter.
So I dropped plans, and I highlighted them to help sort of show you what the lot lines are and what the changes are that are proposed. So thank you, Ms. Skinner, for the detailed explanation, and hopefully this will continue to put that into context. So for you today is just the lot line adjustment. So 125 North State Street is the parcel that is shown in blue, and I apologize, boy, you can't see that like you can on my screen. So it has frontage on North State Street and on Franklin Street. The other three parcels that are part of this application are 20 Franklin Street, 22 Franklin Street, and 10 Franklin Street. twenty-two Franklin Street, and ten Bradley Street. So as I've outlined them, those are the parcel boundaries that exist today. What we are proposing is to adjust these rear lot lines, I apologize, this is a must-have, to adjust the rear lot lines on these three parcels, twenty, twenty-two, and ten Bradley, and to create area that would be contiguous to one twenty-five North State Street. So there is about six thousand square feet from the back of Bradley Street, there is fifteen hundred square feet from the back of twenty-two, and there is twenty-nine hundred square feet from the back of twenty Franklin Street. And so, were the lot line adjustment to be granted, this is what the property line for one twenty-five North State Street would look like. As was stated, there is a landscape easement that exists. It currently is solely on twenty Franklin Street. With the lot line adjustment, the underlying land, a portion of which would become owned by one twenty-five North State Street, a portion would remain owned by twenty Franklin Street. The requirements and the obligations of easement would not change, regardless of who owns the underlying land. Fred can talk a little bit more about what the plans are and why we're doing this, but we, he would like to install solar, ground-mounted solar, in support of one twenty-five North State Street. So the purpose of this and the use of this land is in support of that property. Right now, it will be landscaped. We're going to remove a little bit of pavement that exists when this used to be part of property that shared parking with the former church. But for the time being, all that would be allowed back there would be the landscaping. The goal would be to install solar panels, but anything that we did would have to go through, would have to go through site plan review. So at that time, we would make sure that it complied with the zoning ordinance, that it met all the requirements of the site and regulations, including setbacks, lot coverage, stormwater, all of those things that you're typically used to us bringing before you as the planning board. And there is enough room there that the conduit, or whatever, would need to come and connect those solar panels to the building, would not go through that landscape easement. And so that is the proposal before the board this evening.
So, just, so, I think you've got a different picture up there than I see on my screen. So mine has just one convoluted mess of a plan set that looks very similar to yours, but it doesn't have the colored outlines of the lot lines. Can you just run through them again?
Sure.
So I can kind of match them up to where I am on my...
Absolutely. So let me zoom in a little bit more, because basically the table at the top of the page breaks out the lot areas. I don't know if you can see them now that it's zoomed in a little bit more. So A is this area here. This is the existing lot line. So A is the six thousand three hundred and sixty-nine square feet that would be annexed from ten Bradley to one twenty-five North State Street. This section here is twelve hundred square feet, and this is labeled as C, and so basically it's this section here. The landscape easement, you can see it is a rectangle right there. So this is the plan that we submitted. I just added color to it, but it is the same.
Yeah, that's fine. And, and the idea here is to, and it's not before us, but the idea is to put ground-mounted solar in the A, in the A block there with the access going underneath to feed one twenty-five.
Correct. We looked at doing that through easements, however, the underlying zoning did not allow that, given the difference.
Zoning, it all comes back to zoning, you know?
Trying to play with those.
Zoning. Where did Chris Carley go? Is he still here? Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Board up, yes?
Erin, could you just clarify where the landscaping easement is in this plan, just so I can kind of visually...
Absolutely. Yeah, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit more. Give me one sec. I should have highlighted it, I apologize for that. So the landscape easement is this square, excuse me, rectangle that you see here. So you can see these raised planters.
Yep.
There's a, there's a fence back here, so these raised planters are Rollins Court's raised planters. They have, you know, sole use of this area there.
Where the community gardens basically are.
Correct. Yep, those are on their, connected to their property.
Where, in the future, would the conduits run?
Yep. So right now, there is enough room for them to run through here. There's also no guarantee that the garage would stay, but we did make sure that there's enough room between the edge of the landscape island.
So, the solar panels would be for property on the right, one twenty-five?
Yep.
But you're now saying that the conduits would cross into the property at twenty?
No. No, they would stay. They would come through here. No, maybe they can't.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to, because if it's that whole corner, you've pinched yourself in there, you just said they'd have to come through by where the garage is and zip up through, so that would be actually lot twenty.
I think we have the ability to grant easements for that if it's needed. We still own lot twenty. The time sensitivity of this has to do with getting the rear land behind ten Bradley off of that lot. We have a family that wants to move in the summer and swap properties. They're in the neighborhood. They want to swap this larger house at ten Bradley. We agreed last summer that we would do that, so the future development of one twenty-five is going to take more time. And we still retain all these ownerships, so we have the ability to grant the easements just as we granted for John's development, the easement for the landscape easement, which we will not disturb. We have the ability to grant, I believe, conduit easements to lay the conduit. We have conduit that runs through the Rollins Court property, as an example, by way of easement. So that to follow, the urgent manner for us is to get the ten Bradley Street divided so that this excess land is pulled out of that, so that family can make the housing swap this summer.
I just, I kind of thought that's where the landscaping was, when she said conduit can run through without hitting it.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
One thing that I, I had forgotten, one of the charges that we had was to make sure that the lots did not become more non-conforming, so they all have at least ten thousand square feet, which is the minimum lot size, and they all have no more than fifty percent lot coverage. So where we're not, where Fred is not doing anything with the property today, we didn't want to have to remove the garage. If we get into a situation where, in order to make the solar work that was needed, that would be a discussion at that time, for right now, everyone, everything's going to stay landscaping.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So is that the reason for that little hook at the top that keep you in the ten thousand?
And setbacks. There's a twenty-five foot rear setback, so there were quite a few constraints that sort of dictated that.
Okay, other questions? Okay, members of the audience, any member of the audience have any questions? Love you guys step back, thank you very much.
Matt, question. Is my letter on this already? Do you need the thumb drag? It was on the agenda.
It's in the, it's in the agenda.
It's in our packet.
Okay, I was just trying to pull up my...
The attorney from next, yeah.
My apologies.
That's okay.
I'm Chris Bolt.
Doctor Chindella.
We tendered the letter to Dr. Skinner. Part of that letter has a plan that I'd like to be able to pull up, if possible, that clearly shows our landscape easement. And if you have your copies.
Where was it in your?
It was the, it was exhibit B, so it was after the easement itself.
Okay, the yellow, got the yellow?
Correct. Yellow, green, and orange.
Yellow, green, and orange.
Thank you so much.
So yellow is, just going the other way, right? One twenty-five? That's one twenty-five. So this is Bradley Street over here? This is ten Bradley right here?
Yep.
Yeah, so we're going back the other way. We're just spun around. Okay, so the block.
That's it, yeah. The public common easement.
That's it. The letter's two pages, the easement, I think, is four.
If you click it, it'll download, and then you gotta open it.
There you go. Is your letter?
Letter, the easement, and then exhibit B is the... There we go. Yeah. That's fine.
Perfect. There you go.
Thank you kindly.
You're welcome.
Again, for the record, Chris Bolt, for the Rollins Court owners of the Pocket Neighborhood. To be clear, the green, the green area is the square of our landscape easement. That is an exclusive use. I was happy to hear that they acknowledged that, but the question we had from the get-go is, we didn't know what was going on, so I appreciate it being clarified that it's a solar project. Let it be very clear in the record, based on history. We would like that to be what is designated as this use, and that the, that conduiting, if that's a word, will not go through the landscape easement. With that condition, it's one where the other thing, there's going to be some significant trees have to be taken down in that area for the solar array, and I'm not sure where that comes into the mix. Probably in the site plan review part, but it's one we just wanted to flag for you. But those are our concerns. If they're, if they're staying outside of the landscape easement, that green square, rock and roll.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you for your testimony. Yeah? Anybody else? Yeah, come on up. Great, thank you. Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
Yep, my name is Lori Payment, and I live at twenty-four Franklin Street, which is abuts this property, obviously next to twenty-two, it's going to go in right behind my home. My concern was the, what we hear in the neighborhood, it was like he's putting in this, he's putting in that, you know, so I'm glad to clarify it's solar. However, I just want to make sure by allowing this project to go in, it doesn't open the back up to, through traffic for Rollins Court and anybody else that happens to be coming through. That shed happens to be right in back of my property, which would, or already is kind of an open, open area in the back for par, you know, like an extra parking lot for...
So, so again, just for the record, so this is a lot line adjustment piece of it, so when they come back to us with a plan set that says, this is what we're going to do, and this is what we're going to put in, then we'll get into screening and addressing how things go through the property and whatnot, so...
And do we, as, if landlords get a copy of this?
You would then get notified of that. You'd be at a butters, you'd get a notification, there'll be another meeting just like this, hopefully not two hours later than, for sitting through, for sitting through other things, but you'd be notified, and you'd be able to come in and see the finished plans, which say, here's the lot line, here's what we're going to put on it, here's the buffers, here's the setbacks, here's the trees, here's the landscape plans, here's lighting if it's involved.
So it would be a soup to nuts.
So you'll see the whole thing. This is, this is kind of the groundwork to say, we're going to put these parcels together to snake through a conduit, and then you'll have a chance to address it from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
But great questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions or concerns? No? Okay. All right, so from a staff update and a staff perspective, there's no issues. We heard testimony regarding the easement. Are you comfortable with, with what was said by the attorney for the butters regarding the effect, or the, not disturbance, but the, the effect on that, on that easement?
Yes, we, Fred is aware of the easement and understands that that area is obligated to Rollins Court, so there would be no ability to bring anything in there.
Okay.
I think a concern we would have would be conditioning what that's being used for.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, good with that.
That was the one concern that Fred shared, but the easement, we're, we're on the same page.
Okay. And again, no, you're all set, thank you. For the record, we didn't, we didn't determine the application completely. My fault this time. So it's right here, it says it right here. So we will, we'd love to take a motion to find the application, determine the application complete, not a development of regional impact and open the public hearing, but again...
Open that.
Yeah, we'll do that. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so determination of completeness done, out of order again, but it has been done. We've heard the public testimony, and we've got a staff report in front of us. Anne Marie, help me out here. Did we miss anything? I think we're good.
Nope, we're ready for the findings.
Okay, so again, our findings, findings of fact, we've used the information that we've heard here tonight, the reports the staff's provided, and the testimony we've heard is our finding of fact under seven point two is to grant the minor subdivision approval?
Yep.
For the lot line, okay. Grant the minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment between one twenty-five North Main Street, twenty Franklin Street, twenty-two Franklin Street, and, Street, and ten Bradley Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through seven, one through fourteen, and subsequent condition one. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we'll see you next time for your discussion on the, is that it? Wait a minute. Yeah, that was it. Okay, so moving on in our agenda, what do we got? We're going to move through quick, ten fifteen? Get these done?
Okay.
All right, ten E, let's read that into the record.
Timothy Blackdon, inference of the Concord Lake Senape Trail, requests major site plan approval for construction of a multi-use stone gravel trail, and approval for a conditional use permit for wetland buffer disturbance in conjunction with trail construction. Also requested is a waiver from sixteen point oh two twelve of the site plan regulations, and the site is generally located south of Bog Road and east of the Carter Hill Road-Broad Cove Drive intersection. I forgot to put which zone it's in.
We'll give you a break on that.
Okay.
Is there a determination completeness component to this? No.
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 That was already been...
So it has been determined complete in prior, in previous meetings. We'll welcome the applicant to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Tim Blackdon.
Great. Do we get a staff update on this? Who's this is? Yours, Alec?
Yep, this is mine. This application was required to go to Conservation Commission for a CUP to impact wetland buffers as well as an, as well as went to ADR as a major site plan. Both committees are recommending approval as submitted. There, the applicant is requesting a waiver to drainage and stormwater studies, which staff conditionally supports, and staff is recommending approval of CUP, the conditional approval of the waiver, and conditional approval of the major site plan.
All right, conditional approval of the waiver because?
We are in support that a full storm, I could defer to Pete if I misspeak, but we're in support of not conducting the full stormwater analysis for the project about where there are culverts crossing under, from providing adequate information that they're of size and can carry the flow as required.
Engineering concur?
That's right.
Okay. So we've heard, there's a general consensus on the, on that. We'll come back to that, but welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record and specifically address any concerns or issues you may have, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Tim Blackdon again. I read through the list of, what do you call them?
Conditions?
Recommendations, yeah.
Precedent, precedent conditions. I had, so generally, yes. Good to go with all of them. I had precedent condition ten. I wanted to ask if, if you look at page fifteen of the supplemental, which shows where the wetlands are, if those are merged into the CAD drawing, is that sufficient?
I would have to review, but your supplemental did have a lot of that wetland information, and I think we may have had correspondence for some of that needs to be merged into your site plan.
That's, exactly. So it was drawn on as opposed to CAD-ed in, so...
I'd have to, could pull it up, or I'd have to look at it to make a certain...
All right, so, anyway, I'm, I'm hoping that that would be sufficient there, and then precedent condition fifteen, you're asking to provide the location of the existing water mains, and when we've asked to do this before, General Services has declined for security reasons? Anybody, so...
Wow. That's odd.
I, I, there, there might be some clarification that we, pub, our water utility records are publicly accessible. We don't have them out on the internet GIS-based maps, but you're welcome to come into our office and utilize the public kiosk to get utility cards and that information.
Yeah, so it's just, out at Carter Hill Road, this, this trail ends opposite Pump Station Five, and for the first several hundred yards underneath the railroad grade, there is a water main that then veers off and goes up to the reservoir. And, so I think General Services at the time didn't want to show where that was and say how deep it was, but it's, if we can get it, yes, absolutely.
Okay, and then the waiver regarding the regulations, the condition that Alec outlined regarding the locations of the culverts or the existing culverts, again, we tend to defer to staff, and if they are saying that they're comfortable with a piece of it, but they're going to make you report on the culverts, then we're probably going to do that as well.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine. I've already talked to, to an engineer. We just didn't want to have to map out a mile and a quarter.
Absolutely, yeah, I get that. So we'll, we'll work with engineering to come up with the stat, with the, with the verbiage for the, for the approval, if we do an approval and you're good with that.
Yep.
Okay.
I had a question, I noticed in subsequent conditions number two, I'm encouraged to purchase discs to map out the wetlands, how much are discs and how many feet apart do you have to put them?
They're $1.50.
Okay, times one.
The, there's not a set spacing, it's any, it's within where the construction is likely to happen and it can just depend on line of sight, it's hard to establish a distance based on the topography or orientation, but a consistent spacing where there, there's one visible and you know that you're in the area.
Yeah, okay, so we flagged it, we flagged it, so you want all of the flags essentially replaced with discs at $1.50 apiece?
Correct.
Delighted.
Delighted.
Pass the check.
Raise a little bit more money, Tim. Okay, questions from the board, Jeff?
I do, where you're meeting Carter Hill Road, is there going to be a parking area there or is the trail just going to dead end?
At the moment, there is not going to be a parking area there. We're going to come, we are likely to come back and talk about parking in the future because we know that the parking at 25 Fisherville Road is quite popular and the more we build, the more popular it's going to be. But the, the city has added the Pump Station 5 property to our license agreement and the property on the opposite side of the river, behind Kentucky River Kayaking Canoe. So as we, first we want to finish this piece of trail and then we want to address which side of Carter Hill Road the parking might go on and then we'll come back for that.
Mr. Chairman, follow up?
Yes, sir.
So I noticed on sheet four of five, you have stop signs mid-trail for where you're crossing, looks like in a Butters driveway, but I noticed you don't have any stop signs where you're coming up to Carter Hill Road to kind of let people know as they come around the corner, they need to stop and not just pull right out into the roadway.
Yeah, we can, we'll, we'll put a stop sign.
Perfect.
There and yes, the Barnet Bull Meadow driveway and we've got gates on either side of that, I noticed there was a requirement to show where gates would be placed, so we would, when, when we build the trail, would, would have a gate near Carter Hill Road to...
I just want to make sure it's safe, that's all.
Yeah, you and me both.
Okay, other questions? Do you remember, the audience have any questions or concerns with this application? Yeah, come on up. Thank you, Mr. Blackden for your testimony. Good evening, if you could state your name for the record?
Good evening, I'm Angela Raymond, I live on Bog Road and I just had a couple of technical questions just to make sure because I live where the big culvert that has washed out is washing out again and I live downwater from it, so I want to know what they're doing for that one in particular because we have, like I have lost a bigger chunk of my, what was a little pond is now a bigger pond and, well, my ducks are very happy, however, I'm not very happy because it does wash out and we've had such significant rainfall over the last year. I just want to make sure when they're doing it, like they're doing it at a time when it's either frozen or minimal water in there, so it's not going to then flood more of my property out because this culvert is like the vein of my existence already.
Okay.
And then another question was.
I just, I just, I don't know, I just want to ask engineering or Alec or anybody, but are building and rebuilding conduits part of this, they're not part of this project, are they? There's not anything?
Yeah, we are requesting that, that the culvert be replaced.
Okay.
Yeah.
In this particular spot?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
This particular one.
Okay.
Yeah, that particular one and the flow studies are going to be out there too, so we can see how much flow actually, is it right, is it sized correctly? I know they had said they wanted it to go back to what was originally there, but I'm saying if it's washed out and the Mother's Day flood, it's washed out again now, I can tell you, I can show you pictures of my property where it's changed course, it's most likely not, something's not corrected it. I'm not an engineer, but I can tell you something's not right with it if it keeps washing out.
It'll be designed by an engineer and stamped by an engineer.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
And then my next question was, across the street at Camp Spalding, they recently, they're doing whatever they're doing with the Scots or whoever's doing it and they had to do a study up there because they said that there was landing spotted turtles along with the northern black racer and eastern hog nose habitat. Does that trickle up to the bog that's along the sides of the road? Or if their habitat areas, because I know I also own a piece out on Horse Hill Blackwater and is, the habitat is over there as well, so is that?
Know anything?
I don't.
Yeah, know anything about that at all?
Well, and that's just a question, like I said, and I only knew, like I didn't even know they did studies about this, I knew, I ran into the northern black racer habitat when we had our property logged on the other side and I was like, oh, I didn't even know that was a thing and so I didn't know it was a thing again until they just put it on, the New Hampshire Scots put it on their Facebook page that they had had the study completed and they.
And they found that there was habitat in that area?
There was habitat in that area, across the street, so that's why I said, I don't know, it might be that that's the other side and it's closer to the river.
Okay.
Maybe they like the river better, I'm not a scientist, but I know I love animals and I have tons of animals, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure that that's a thought somewhere in there.
Did this go through Conservation Commission?
It did, it had to.
Yeah, so it would have gone through Conservation Commission and they would have, that, that certainly would have come up, that would have been one of the, one of the triggers.
Okay, I'll double check with them because I can't see anything on there, so I'll ask them. And then the last question was just more for Tim about like on, where, where the trail comes along Bog Road, are you guys taking all the trees on the left side because it showed that your cut was making trees, like you're taking trees on not the roadside, but on the bog side? And that's kind of concerning because of how much water we get, I don't want to see any of the trees go because those obviously absorb a lot more of the water, but can the trail hug closer to the road than by moving it closer to the bog according to your plan? It looked like it was going more away from the road.
Are you asking if we're taking trees down not along the railroad grade, between the railroad grade and Bog Road?
No.
Okay, along, along the railroad grade, tight to the grade.
Yep.
From where the, the snowmobile trail comes in.
Yep.
Going to the east, we've flagged a lot of trees to take down, we'll leave as many as we can, but we need to be able to get the equipment in there and actually build the trail.
I understand that and my only concern is where it hugs the road, like where that section where it comes right along the road and people already park there.
Which road?
On Bog Road, where it's, so you leave the snowmobile trail and you head back towards your trailhead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's a portion of it where it comes really close to Bog Road, where the trail comes, runs parallel and there's only about five feet in between Bog Road and where the trail is.
About a half mile east of here, huh?
Yes.
Yeah.
That portion there on your map that you dictated, it looks like there, the trees are getting removed on the bog side.
Yes.
You should make, you should, instead of removing the trails, the water already comes up there and it already pools there as it is right now, it hasn't gone down at all from all the extensive rain we've had this year, so by removing the trees, what's that going to do to erode it instead of bringing it to the road, which the road has already gotten raised, how many feet did it get raised when they repaved it last year, two years ago?
Yeah, so.
Wouldn't that make more sense for stability?
We're trying to stay right on top of the railroad grade itself, that's the highest point, so we don't want to move over toward the Ford Bog Road. You can see the trail slopes down and there's a ditch and then the road, so we're just trying to keep it straight as, as the railroad design is.
But you're going to cut the trees to make it wider, correct?
Some, yes.
So you're still going to alter the grade that's there by when you cut the trees?
We're going to stay out of the wetland, so we can't move on either side there and there's button sedge that we need to protect, it's a plant and we did go through NHB data check for other species, so we're, we're clear.
Okay, okay, I didn't know, the one that I could find online said it was from 2020 and I know that they, the friends across the street just had done it this year, so I didn't know if it changed that much in four years. Again, I'm not a scientist or an engineer, but I want to raise the concern if it's there, I want to try and protect it, so.
Okay. Yeah.
In the supplemental material, they, they do have, indicate they have their NHDOT wetland permits and they do provide information from NHB with confidential and, you know, anything confidential was stripped, but you know, all that is in their supplemental.
Okay.
Okay, and then one last thing and I'm really done for you guys for the night. If it was a public hearing, shouldn't we have had the notices gone out again from them for the, or is that not, because the February one that they didn't?
You had reached out, I didn't have a return number for you. February 11th was the initial notice sent out with the DOC and they've been, they had postponed in, in this session once previously, but you should have received that in or around that February 11th time for this project.
Okay, I'll go back there and look, I just happened to be here for another thing, so it worked out two months ago.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Okay, other questions from the audience? No? We'll close the public hearing and turn to our staff report here. Any other comments or questions from the board or from staff? No? So recommendations, again, using the data that we've heard here, the information is our findings of fact, the public testimony and the applicant's testimony, we have in our packet, grant architectural design review approval for the site plan as submitted. Would someone like to make a motion to, in 4.2, to grant architectural design review with ADR comments as well?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded, I believe, by Counsel Todd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Geez, these are strange, these waivers, so is that 4.3, again, using the criteria in 674443E2, Section 3602 of the Site Plan Regulations, grant the following waiver to the Site Plan Regulations with the condition that in the areas of the trail where the existing culvert's calculation must be provided to prove that the culverts are adequate for drainage in the immediate area. So we're going to grant that waiver without any changes in language?
It might be easier to, you know, understand it as grant, grant the, grant the waiver to Section 160212, creating drainage with the condition that in areas of the trail where there are existing culverts, calculations must be provided to prove that the culverts are adequate to drain the immediate area, does that sound better?
Perfect, that's better, yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just ask a question of engineering? Have those, have the conditions assessment been done on those culverts? It's great to say that they're adequate for the flow, but do we also want to know if they're rotting out or failing in any way?
I know we've looked at the one that has to be replaced. The other ones, I'm not so sure about, it's probably three or four other ones.
From, should we add that to this, that it's not only are they adequate for flow, but the condition is acceptable to engineering?
Yeah, we, yeah, that's, that's probably wise.
We add that in, Alec, you're the wordsmith crafter for the, for the, for the waivers, do you, based on what you'd, you'd said before, do we add in a caveat that the additional, the sta, staff or, you know, city staff will review, engineering staff will review the culvert, the existing culvert conditions to ensure they're adequate? I don't want to be rebuilding all of them, but.
You could, I think you may, you may have just hit it, something along the end of, and inadequate condition subject to the approval of the city engineer, something along those lines.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Appropriate?
Yep.
Okay, all right, any other discussion, questions? No? So we'll, would someone like to make a motion to, is that all the waivers, just that waiver or just that one waiver? So would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 4.4 is to grant the conditional use permit, CUP, in accordance with Section 2843D of the zoning ordinance to allow for the wetland buffer disturbance to place a stone dust surface along the center of the former rail grade. Someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, in 4.5, grant major site plan approval for the proposed multi-use trail generally located south of Bog Road, east of Carter Hill, Broad Cove Road Drive Intersection, subject to the following conditions and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through AAU 1920 and precedent and subsequent conditions 1 and 2. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and enthusiastically seconded.
Second, I'm sorry.
By Counsel Pierre, by Earl. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set, thank you very much and let's move on, just a couple more, stick with us folks here, let's move on to 10F in the agenda if we could.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC, on behalf of Sarah L. Herd and Benjamin A. Herd, request approval of a minor subdivision lot line adjustment application. Also requested is a waiver from Section 12.085 of the subdivision regulations, sites are addressed as 53 and 71 Little Pond Road in the open space residential district.
All right, can we get a quick staff update on this one?
Sure, it's a lot line adjustment between two properties of the same owner. I don't think staff, there's a handful, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit behind catching up.
Yeah, grant the waivers, you've got waiver requests. So we've got waivers on 1208 existing conditions, natural features, 1208 existing conditions, tabulations and 1505 required information of wetland delineations and 1503 for topography. Those are the waivers, right?
Yep, and staff is in support.
Support of those, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, welcome to the table, Mr. Sergeant, if you could state your name for the record?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant, we have to determine this complete?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. You were going to stop me, Anne Marie was going to smack you, DNR. All right, so geez, 15, 53 Little Pond Road, you know.
It's right here.
Right here. Okay, so motion to, motion is, I'm just looking for, non-development, okay, staff has found the application complete, would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and not a development of regional impact and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you are all set. Again, welcome to the table, something shaking on there?
Yeah, it's really shaken.
All right.
And I lost, is that it? Okay, there we go, okay.
All right, tell us a little bit about this.
Well, good evening, my name's Mark Sergeant, I'm with the firm of Richard Bartlett and Associates and I'm here tonight representing the Herds. The lot line adjustment before the board this evening, as mentioned, is at 53 or between 53 and 71 Little Pond Road, both parcels are owned by the Herds. 53 Little Pond Road has an area of 2.24 acres with 349 feet of frontage on Little Pond Road and also has a single family home. 71 Little Pond Road has an area of 16.1 acres with 225 feet of frontage, also a single family home on that and Bo Brook traverses both parcels. So the proposal before the board this evening is to annex 4.56 acres of 71 to 53, so that's this back portion right here, let me see. This would give 53 a new area of 6.8 acres and leave 71 with an area of 11.54 acres. There wouldn't be any change in frontage. And as mentioned, we did request four waivers, they were for natural features, tabulations, wetlands and topographies. On the plan was shown sufficient area on each of the lots that depicts that each of the lots meet the minimum buildable and usable areas. We also have delineated the wetlands and depicted the wetland buffers on the areas of the approved portions of each property. So with that, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, questions of the applicant? Looks pretty straightforward. Do you remember the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, thank you for that testimony, Mr. Sergeant and in our packet here, we've got, again, using the information that was presented to us tonight, the data that we've got in our packet is our findings of fact, we'll make our decisions based on that. 7.2 is to grant the waiver requests as outlined, I think I'd outlined the 12.08 existing conditions for natural features, 12.08 existing conditions for tabulations, sorry, three is wetland delineations and four was topography. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 7.3 is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment between 53 and 71 Little Pond Road, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. Those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through 15 and subsequent condition 1. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set. Thank you, sir. You waited all that time just for that.
It used to be they did the lot line adjustments first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we don't do that anymore. We make you wait. We like to see you back there, just looking at your clock. All right, let's read 10G, 10G into the record, if we could.
Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Country Estates of Concord LLC and Million Dollar View LLC, request approval of a minor subdivision, re-subdivision lot line adjustment application for five lots in the 16-lot subdivision. Site is addressed as 119 Sewell Falls Road in the single-family residential district.
Great. We got a staff update on this?
We do. Can we determine it complete?
We can. We can do that first. So let's, staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and recommends opening the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are open. Welcome to the table. We'll get a staff update real quick and then have you introduce yourself.
Okay. The applicant is proposing a re-subdivision of a recently recorded 16-lot subdivision plat. The site contains, right now, an existing house and barn, both of which were proposed for demolition as part of the original approval. The existing house and barn cross newly platted lot lines and create non-conforming setbacks for the existing house and barn, as well as any new construction that would take place on five lots that is the subject of the re-subdivision. Since that time, there's been a change of ownership. The property is now owned, rather than Abbott Road LLC, it is now owned by the Million Dollar View and Concord Estates of Concord LLC. And the barn is going to remain, the house is going to be demolished. They're in the process of doing that now. For the barn to remain, the re-subdivision needs to take place, to reconfigure the five lots in question, to alleviate any portion of the barn crossing lot lines, and to alleviate any setback non-conformities.
Okay. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
I'm Dan Borowski with Fieldstone.
Andy Pearlman with Perneer &amp; Pearlman of Nashua, counsel to the applicants.
Great. Welcome to the table. Tell us a little bit about this.
Anne Marie just gave a great overview of it, but tried to keep it short. This application proposes a lot line adjustment between five lots on a recently approved 16-lot subdivision on Abbott and Sewell Falls Road. The subject lots all have frontage along Sewell Falls Road, and all lots, with the exception of 203Z39, are currently vacant. 203Z39 has the barn on it right now. The existing lots range in size from 15,745 square feet and 100 feet of frontage to 63,770 square feet and 316 feet of frontage. After the lot line adjustments, the size of the lots will range from 14,760 square feet and 110 feet of frontage to 60,728 square feet and 272 feet of frontage. The lots are located in the residential single-family district, and the largest lot, way to the east, has partially located in the Wetlands Conservation Overlay District. The purpose of this lot line adjustment is to ameliorate current zoning violation on 203Z39. The existing historic barn encroaches onto the side setbacks. It's the intent of the applicant to keep the barn on lot 203Z39 and to adjust the lot lines so that there's no encroachment into the setbacks. Additional frontage has been added to lots 39, 392, 393, and 394, which will even out the lot line adjustments to harmonize the adjustment throughout all five lots and will allow for single driveways onto the lots as opposed to the shared common driveway shown on the original 16-lot subdivision plan. This change adds two more curb cuts along roughly 400 feet of frontage. The lot line locations and number of driveways are the only substantial changes proposed from the previously approved 16-lot subdivision plan. And we've requested no waivers with this application, and all the resulting lots will meet all zoning requirements.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Spent a lot of time looking at this plan when it first came out, and a lot of time discussing it, and I'm glad to see that it's moving forward.
Quick question. So what will remain is you still will have 16 houses?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, 15 plus the barn.
15 plus the barn?
Yeah.
And what are your plans for the barn?
We're going to keep it. Someone some years ago put a lot of money into that barn, and it's beautiful inside, so we're going to keep it as is.
Well, you're going to do a barn dominium, or?
Possibly. Right now, it's just storage, but the owners plan to keep it for the foreseeable future.
I'll wait for those plants.
Yeah. Get eyes on it, Jeff.
So, just some clarification. I see that there's some common driveway easements to be extinguished. Are you now looking for individual driveways for every lot when the original approval had shared driveways?
Not every lot, just the five lots. Only two of the easements would be extinguished. The lots closest to the intersection of Abbott Road and Sewell Falls Road would still be common driveways.
Oh, because I'm looking at the...
So, these lots over here would still have common drives, and then these lots would each have individual driveways.
So how come lots, parcels three and two couldn't continue to have a shared driveway? What does that one need to be extinguished?
I suppose it doesn't need to be extinguished, but we're requesting that it...
We're proposing that. Now, don't forget that these are larger lots compared to the triangle corner as you approach the intersection of two roads. So the smaller lots made sense that there would be a shared driveway. The larger lots can accommodate individual driveways, so our request is to have the individual driveways for these lots.
I would just say it's not a function of the lot size, it's how many driveway access that we want to have on the roadway and the safety and the conflict point. So I would prefer to see we go back to the shared on the lots that can still accommodate shared to kind of stay consistent with the original approval. And I understand there may be a need on the barn property or something like that, because how would you access the barn? Is it, so it'd have its own driveways as well?
Yes.
Yes.
My recommendation is to keep the shared.
Okay.
Like we had them before.
Henry?
Staff concurred with that recommendation because the precedent condition six is the common driveway easements for the five sublots must be shown on Sheet 1 for full compliance with section, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm going to apologize. That's the second or third time tonight that I have not read through all those conditions. I'll do better next time.
It's okay.
So, so it's, it's, so it's addressed in precedent condition six, but they're saying they want to extinguish those. But we're saying, keep them?
Correct. Staff had the same concern, and that the transportation engineer specifically mentioned that this didn't need to have, they didn't need to, the common driveway easement needed to remain.
Okay.
So plead your case. Why do you want to get rid of the majority of the shared driveways?
Well, no, it's just two.
Oh, it's just two?
It's just, it's just two, on the bigger lots, on the bottom corner.
Okay.
And it's like any easement, that you have to share with your neighbor. People prefer to have their own driveways, have their own access, without sharing with someone, without sharing expenses or plowing or whatnot. Just, it's a, it's a better lot without it. And we understand that the, to reduce the number of curb cuts, we understand that concept. But if we can have the individual driveways on these lots, we think it makes sense, and we keep the rest of them.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Engineering or our staff are good? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns? Yep, we'll have you guys hop back. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys make sure you sign in if you haven't.
Good. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
It's further from the edge. I'm Danielle Hillstro. I own an abutting property to this development. One of my questions was about where is the driveway for five, six, seven, and eight, because that is right across the street from my house. So, but that has been, I guess, sort of answered, that it will fall into what used to be nine, eight, seven, and six on the old plan from 2022. I also wanted to know what was happening with the barn. I'm glad to see it stay because originally in 2022, the board here had said that it needed to be sold and moved because we have, we're losing too many barns in New Hampshire, was the quote. I did also want to know if the landscaping plan is going to remain the same as, since all of the trees have been removed, we have no screen on the Sewell Falls roadside, none, any of us that are now affected by the bright sun. So I just wanted to know if the landscaping scheme was going to remain the same, if that was still going to be part of the plan. And I think the rest were already answered.
Yeah, landscaping, you can answer, but yeah, that'll stay the same.
They do have to comply with, with the, all the applicable conditions of approval from the original.
Okay. And so like I said, I mean, is it a safe assumption that where it used to be nine was on the corner, but now eight is, nine, eight, seven, six is now eight, seven, six, five, and that's still going to be shared?
Yes.
Okay. Which is going to put six, five right in front of my house. All right.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I saw another hand. Okay, come on up. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Sure. I'm Meredith Raska, and I own 74 and 76 Metalac Drive, which is the abutting, or one of the abutting properties of the condo association just north of this triangle. And I want to just start out with saying, what happened with the previous developer was truly sad. And I was at the demolition meeting last month where I did connect with the current developer and his attorney, and I would like to thank them, you know, for the business card and for the dialogue that we had. I do not have an issue with the change in lot lines. What they're doing makes sense. I understand at this point that it's already passed, there's nothing I can do. What I would like to ask, though, in this change, if this is even possible, is the removal of the public sidewalk at the north part of this property that lets the 99 Metalac Drive to Core Village Condominium Association land. Reason being, first, there is a public sidewalk that is at the north part of our land. Second, we've had recent vandalism and theft on our property, and so we are concerned that the addition of people kind of going through that area will also encourage that. We are also concerned with encroachment and the liability of that. So I am here, again, I have no problem with the lot line change, it makes sense. And I know back in 2022, the city was for this sidewalk going in, but being that it has increased our, or, you know, potentially increased our insurance costs, the safety of our community that we're currently questioning right now, I just ask that that might be reconsidered.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's good testimony. Any other questions, comments, concerns from the audience? No? Okay, seen none. We'll close the public hearing. I don't know if we're in the business of removing sidewalks, but I don't know if you have any thoughts, any thoughts on that, or?
It's a requirement in the subdivision regulations that they be installed, so...
That they be installed, okay.
Okay.
I was thinking...
I'm sure you wouldn't.
Okay, so let's move on here. So we've got in our packet, what am I, all right, so again, using our findings of fact, the information that's been presented tonight, and the data that we've heard, the testimony we heard, really, just one issue here, the grant of minor subdivision approval for the re-subdivision of 17, 19, 123, 125, 127 Sewell Falls, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through 18, subsequent conditions 1 through 6. Now, we want to address common driveways? How do we?
It's in there.
It's in there, so we don't need to do anything. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are good to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, last one.
Thanks for staying, by the way.
Thank you.
Watched what you did, I'm amazed. I do this all the time. This was Nashville, they would have gone to bed about three hours.
Tip your waitresses on, tip your waitresses on the way out. All right, so let's move on. Item 10H is our last item on our agenda, a 67454 application from the state.
Yeah.
Come on up. Guys get paid by the hour, right, so?
Close toward your retirement.
All right, let's, let's get a quick staff update on this, if we could. I know there's a couple of concerns, so give them to us.
Well, the park, the project is proposing to reclaim existing parking lot, add 21 spaces, stormwater improvements, one of which includes lining a city culvert or city pipe, and...
It's a massive city pipe, isn't it? I think it's, it's one of the big ones, I think, I thought, coming down through there.
It's a good size.
Okay.
You've got our staff reports, you know, I think, you know, staff would want us, you know, make sure that consideration to future Store Street extensions north are taken into account and impacts. And then we had some other comments to be addressed.
Great. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Scott Carey, and I work for the state public works. I'm the project manager for the project.
All right. Tell us a little bit about this. This is reclaiming an existing parking lot, is that right? Or was, was, once a parking lot?
Yep, it is a parking lot right now. And this project is being funded by a state capital budget fund, and the parking lot itself has become very deteriorated over time. And so we are set to reclaim and pave it.
And is it just, it wasn't 100% clear on, it shows the front of the building, how far out from the old liquor store entrance, say, into the, whatever the, whoever owns the mall, Brickmore, how far out is it, is it you're looking at, or is it around the back?
So there's a section along which would be the north side, I think the side you're talking about, facing Market Basket.
In Mark's, yeah.
So we do have a sinking curb line there, and we're going to reset that curb line. And then to remove the front section of concrete sidewalk there that is also badly deteriorated, replace that with a landscape stone, and then there'll be large granite pavers, excuse me, pavers. I like calling pots. There's a detail on the plan sheet. I forget the exact size, but it's dimensions there. And those will act sort of like a landscape feature, but also a security type slash bollard. The other side is just, excuse me, to the west parking lot that's already there, and it's in, it's in need of repair.
Yeah, tough shape.
And, yep, and the sidewalk's going to be redone. And then over along to the warehouse side, which is also where the liquor commission license and enforcement division is. That side is probably the worst, and that will also be reclaimed and paved.
Okay. I think, I know there was some questions regarding future streets, and I don't know if we want to address those, or if those have been addressed appropriately within the states.
I just, since we're all here, per the 1997 downtown master plan, which was discussed a lot.
Which was discussed.
There is a plan to extend Store Street south, and it would go through the liquor commission's parking lot, swing out into the rail yard, head south underneath the Water Street Bridge, which was built to be double-wide to accommodate this, to ultimately come down and land at Langdon Avenue, across from the driveway into the rail yard project that Dakota Partners is building. So I don't think what you're doing interferes with any of that, but since you're here, we'd like to communicate with the state that we have this plan. We've had it out there for 27 years, and the state actually, when we built the Water Street Bridge, accommodated that plan, DOT did. So just FYI, we're not asking for anything, but just wanted to let you know. And we do have a map of a future street for the state statute that... We do have a map and a future street for the state statute that contemplates all of that, so...
And just for the record, that's, that's Theater Street?
Uh, yeah, so across the street here, I'm sorry, to orient you. So it will be, it will create a four-way intersection. This is Store Street. This is Theater Street that comes down. This is the, the parking lot behind. This is the loading zone, the loading docks for the liquor commission. So there'll be a four-way intersection here. That section of Store Street would continue back up to Main, but this would come down and go south to the south end rail yard is how that would go.
Can we put ninety-foot buildings on that? Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, because you can't look any other way for the state house. Come on.
Okay, so again, just, you know, the map line of future streets and the development in that area is gonna, as, again, as cascading things happen, as the parking garage, the existing parking garage comes down and developments are gonna start to ramp in that area, we want to, you know, just, it's just out there. Something that we want to be considering. And again, I don't think it affects us at all, so...
Just to put you on notice.
Just a general, just a general piece. So any other questions? Again, this is a six seventy-four application, so ask away, but...
Yeah, I do. I was trying to understand, when I was looking at your lot lines, it looks like all that parking that you're proposing adjusting and dealing with is actually on the adjacent parcel of the northern side?
The northern side.
Do you have permission from the abutter, do that work on their property?
Well, what we, that's a great question. We own the part that we are working on, the curb part. The restriping part, we, um, perhaps we don't, and I can find out, but we were doing that out of the kindness of our heart.
They may or may not appreciate it.
You could scroll up just a little bit. If I'm following the property line correctly...
I'm sorry.
It might, actually, it might be just in that view. The part, the property line, sorry, down the, right, property line looks like it's that line right there. Goes up through. It's that light dash line, which means all this work, curb work, planters, everything, is on the abutter's property.
Um, I don't know if I...
I can, I can come and show it to you on that one if it's easier.
Is it better, because I don't, is the line called out on that?
Could that be the setback line?
This line right there? That line right there is property, isn't it? And it goes right up along the building, which means all that is on the other property, right there. That's your setback.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's your property.
I think Fred has ever...
Can you just do the issue for me? They might call it out.
So if it's got a bearing and distance on it, it's a property line.
Well, which one? There's two there.
Uh, if that one's the property line right there with bearing and distance on it, it's running right up under the canopy somewhere in there.
Easement for Concord Walkway. Covered.
Right, but that's for the, but does that include the parking that you're actually, I just want to make sure you're not gonna run afoul right as you start construction. So maybe talking Brickmore and making sure, you know, even if, you know, you've got written agreement between the two of you, fine, just want to cover your...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, I really do. I know that the gentleman that I work with, um, for the liquor commission, Andrew Davis, is in contact with them. I think they also have a liquor retail store right next door.
Yeah, they kind of do, so they probably have a benefit to work with you.
Yeah, uh, but I will make, I will certainly make that known.
I only want to think, I noticed recently that the rail companies come in and clear cut the back lot, and it's all sand. I was there Saturday, and there was a vent up at the Capitol, and people were parked all out in that gravel, out beyond your parking lot. So I'm wondering if it behooves you to consider a fence or a tree line or something to delineate between you and that rail yard so that people aren't using your parking lot to access out into there.
Okay, the building that they had removed recently?
Yeah, they removed it and they cleared that whole lot. I mean, you can literally just, you don't, you don't know where the property is. It's like, I was trying to physically figure out, and I had a hard time figuring out out there, and I hate it.
Or you could leave it, just like it is.
You could just leave it like it is and give some free parking to people who are downtown on Saturday. Hello?
All right, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna wrap up here, eleven oh five, with, with two good pieces. If, if that's good, if you're, from the state's perspective, we gave you a little bit of feedback and some free advice. And we'll close the public hearing on that. We don't have to do anything, again, it's a six seventy-four. Any other business to legally come before the board tonight, Anne Marie? No? All right, so we'll recommend, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll entertain a...
I have a question on our June meeting, we changed that.
Oh, yes, we did move, we did move the June meeting.
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth, so not next month, but June eighteenth, because it's Juneteenth.
Because June nineteenth is...
That's how I remember my wedding.
All right.
Now I gotta take it to dinner.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No moves.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're all adjourned. Thank you very much.